The special assessment district, the authority and use of it, the process the county would have to undergo to set up the district, what Chatham Park's proposal is, what our analysis is of the impact on the county. A list of county requests from Chatham Park. This won't be the first time that I say this, but most of those requests were reflected in our input due during the additional elements. Most everything is on that list. And then, we would ask for your consideration of consent for us to move forward with Chatham Park to establish the special assessment. So again, we're asking for your consent to move forward for what additional information that you need to make that decision. We want you to review our list of requests from the developer. The discussion that we had with Commissioner Fiocco and Mayor Perry was, most of that is already covered under additional elements. So we just want to make sure we're on the same page moving forward. And then, the only new item on the list tonight is the fire station and equipment for Pittsboro Fire. So I'm going to go through that in a bit more detail. And I have Chief Griffin here and our Fire Marshal, Thomas Bender, in case you have specific fire-related questions. So you'll notice that the view of the presentation switches. This is from the Davenport study. This is an overview of the special assessment district. It's levied against property, not people. So it follows the property. It is levied in some proportion to the benefit that's received by the property. And it's typically used for public improvements. The special assessment district is the area in which it is levied, and it's not a governmental, it's not any kind of governmental structure. So the county would levy the special assessment district, and then we would be responsible for collecting it. In North Carolina, there are two methods of assessment. In towns, you're pretty familiar with the traditional assessment, which is typically used for streets and water lines and that kind of thing. And that is repaid over, it's assessed against property and repaid over 10 years. The special, the new legislation expands the authority considerably from the traditional authority. And it also gives the ability for property owners to pay the assessment for over a 30-year period. So those are two very big and important distinctions between special assessment and traditional. And this chart, which is very hard to read, but this covers what in a traditional special assessment and also what the new authority provides for. And everything that Chatham Park has proposed to cover in the special assessment district, the projects it's proposed to cover are on that authorized list. So we can lawfully do what they have proposed. These are the various steps that we have to undertake as the county to implement the assessment district. I won't go over those in detail. I'll just say that first, the first thing is that petition was required, and it must be from a majority of the property owners. So it's one of the reasons that Chatham Park is interested in moving forward with the special assessment district now while they are the major property owners. There are 11 steps. Again, I won't go through that unless you have a question. Just about those. There have been four, sorry, three special assessments set up in the state of North Carolina under this new authority. In all cases, the city or county levies the district, but they also issue debt to pay public improvements. So what we're doing is different from that. The county's not issuing debt. Chatham Park will pay upfront the cost for the public improvement. And then, we, if we levy the assessment, then the property owners would pay them back over time for the cost of those improvements. Does that make sense? And that was one of the reasons why, it wasn't clear in the original statute that we could do what Chatham Park is proposing. So what, this is what has been proposed by Chatham Park. They're asking for one special assessment district that covers the entire development, approximately 7,400 acres. And they're proposing a 25-year payback. It could go up to 30, but they're proposing a 25-year payback. So in order to do that, or what this means is, the last homes and businesses in the development will be built approximately in 2050, according to their latest development schedule. So that means we'll be collecting the special assessment until 2075. So the assessment is contemplated for a system of improvement. I'll go over those generally, give you the total figures, and then Mr. DeLisandro will go through specifically what projects that will cover. And they're envisioning, these are larger, the larger public improvements like the thoroughfare streets, collector's streets, major water lines, that kind of thing, not neighborhood streets, not running water lines to houses. So it's the major infrastructure. And the special assessment would be levied at the beginning over the entire acreage. And then, as parcels are subdivided, then the assessment will be divided up among those parcels. So let's just say the special assessment was 500 million. It'd be levied over the whole thing, and then as it's carved off, those parcels would pay their proportionate share of the total assessment. So the total assessment is projected to be between 450 million and 650 million. That amount will be established when the assessment is levied. And then, once set, that's the upper limit of what should be collected over time. So Mr. DeLisandro and I were having a conversation earlier. We weren't clear about what the methodology is that will be used to assess commercial properties. The information we got from the developer was kind of, we took it as sample information, not as the information. And so, he may be able to shed more light on how the assessment will be apportioned among commercial property. With respect to residential, the assessment will range from $5,000 to $30,000. That's the amount to be paid back over 25 years. That's not a yearly amount. Does that make sense? The county is obligated to use all of our tax collection powers to collect that assessment. So it's treated just like a tax for that purpose, which would include all collection measures up to including foreclosure on the property. Chatham Park is envisioning the list of real property classes or classes for how the assessment will be apportioned in that bottom section. So Chatham Park expects the assessment to run through the full payment of assessments by each parcel with the 25 payments, 25-year payment cycle, which I've already said. You might ask, well, how does, how will the property be treated that is owned by the developer? And that property will be held in advance, the statute allows for that, and so they will not be, Chatham Park will not be paying the special assessment district. We have tentatively agreed that the trigger for when the special assessment district would start being paid is when the building permit is issued. It might be final inspection, but those are the things that we'll need to work through. So Chatham Park will arrange for repetitive and full disclosure of the assessment when home buyers purchase homes in Chatham Park. This is a summary of the improvements that would be made in Chatham Park, which they're requesting reimbursement through the special assessment. The first column is costs in $2017, and the second column is with 3% annual escalation. So the chart on the left is Chatham Park North. And you can see there's a little, a smaller difference between the $2017 and the 3% escalation. And then, the chart on the right is Chatham Park South. There's a much larger difference because those improvements will be made at a later date, and so the 3% annual inflation causes that number to be significantly more. And then, the chart at the bottom of the slide summarizes the two. So add those together. So one argument, and Mr. DeLisandro will speak to, what the benefits of imposing the special assessment district will be. I think it's more appropriate that he speak to those. But in our, in the county's consideration of this question, we asked that the developer provide development numbers with both the special assessment district and without the special assessment district, and how that impacted property values and rate of development. And that is what they did. The chart at the bottom of the slide shows the difference between the two. With regard to residential, there was no change in the development schedule. So they would do exactly the same number of residential units they had proposed in a given year, whether they had the special assessment or not. For commercial, the only difference for residential is that the value would be less if there was not a special assessment. With regard to commercial, both the rate of commercial would be slower without the special assessment, and also the square footage value would be less. Does that make sense? So overall, the impact is that there would be less sales tax and property tax without the special assessment district. So this chart summarizes the total property value with the assessment and without the assessment, and the bottom table gives you the difference. So it's about a $1.8 billion difference in property value between having and not having the assessment. So also, part of the county's consideration is how will this development impact the county's budget? Basically, what are the revenues and expenditures that we can expect to see from Chatham Park? And we did an extremely thorough analysis of revenues and expenses. We spent several months, we met with departments, we went through basically all programs in the county, and apportioned them if appropriate to Chatham Park. We also did the same with revenue. The developer provided all of the assumptions regarding values and development pace and population. They also worked with the state, NC State Group, that does student population projections, because the main impact on us will be schools to help model out the number of students that will be coming from the development. So all of that went into the mix of our impact. And I should say, this is in always direct impact and not indirect impact. So the developer will say that there's going to be greater economic impact outside of the development, which I'm sure is true, but we did not try to factor that in because we had no methodology to do that. There'll also be indirect effects. So the service workers who work within the development, or the construction workers or whatever, depending on their wage, they may qualify for economic benefits through DSS, but we did not consider that because they will not be living in Chatham Park. The value of housing in Chatham Park, the lowest value is enough so that a person who would be able to afford that is not going to be on public assistance. So we did not include the cost of public assistance in our analysis. And we went through basically every program and asked questions like that. So much of cooperative extensions did not get allocated, for example, because they deal with mostly agriculture. So this is a summary of the impact. Also, Chatham Park initially provided initial sales tax numbers for us, and we kind of developed another model. We thought the sales tax projections, I mean, they may be completely accurate, but they're not something that we see in the state. So what we did was try to come up with peer counties in the state and base, sales tax based on those peer counties. So we used counties with like population and with like per capita income. And we took the county, they ran a, some sort of analysis, our consultants did, and we took the counties, the five counties above us and the five counties below us, and used the average sales tax per capita number to generate the lower model. So the difference you see with their numbers is almost 54 million. That's cumulative impact over the 10 years. And our number is about 31 million cumulative impact. And I think the truth is probably in the middle, but we were trying to come up with the sales tax methodology that we felt more comfortable with. We also ran six different sensitivity analyses against those two cases with their sales tax numbers and with our sales tax numbers. So the lowest sensitivity analysis case generated $15 million cumulatively in revenue over the 10-year period. Now, we did not combine factors. So we looked at a 20% lower or slower development schedule, and we looked at 20% lower values. And we worked, we looked at what if our impact fees get repealed? But we didn't put all those things into a model. So it's possible, although I think unlikely, that if a number of factors, negative factors were true, that we could be at breakeven or even lower. But we did not go that route. And I'm happy to provide that methodology to the town if you would like to see it. So we've been talking about the fire station issue since December of 2016, when the developers of Mosaic asked to meet with me. I can't remember who I was at that meeting. I don't remember if Chief Griffin was there. But we talked about the issue of fire response. And at some point, there's going to need to be a station within Chatham Park. I don't think there's any doubt about that. The main issue right now is the need for an aerial truck. So I've gotten a schooling in ISO ratings from state, and I've gotten a schooling in fire service over this time. And the ladder truck or the aerial truck is not needed for the ISO rating as it is, because all of the commercial buildings will be sprinkled. The problem is, when you get really dense residential development, you need an aerial truck to be able to effectively fight those fires. I would just suggest maybe one day, when you have the opportunity, drive into Rye Chapel and see the density of development within Rye Chapel, and imagine a fire truck and a fire crew out there fighting the fire. And that's the issue that's going to happen when Chatham Park develops dense residential. So there are a number of issues with the fire department, and those have sort of come to light over time. As I said, I met with the developer, you know, over, well, a year and a few months ago. Also, I've met with Mr. Greasebeck. I've met with Mr. Griffin, or Chief Griffin, to talk about this issue. The district, as property is annexed by the town, the district will lose that property. So their revenues will go down from the district. Does everybody understand that? Because the town funds them out of your, out of your general fund budget. The county funds them by levying a special tax within the district. Currently, the tax is 12.25 cents in the district. My understanding of what happens is that 12.25 cents is multiplied by the town's value, tax value, and that's how the town's budget is currently generated. And we would strongly recommend that that be the way the budget's generated, at least that much be the way that it's generated going into the future. Otherwise, what's going to happen is, if you don't make up for the revenue loss, then they're going to be losing revenue while their service demands are increasing, and that will be a major issue. So the district alone, we could levy the highest tax possible in the district, and we can't solve the aerial truck issue. That only generates, we're at 12 and 1/4 cents, we can only go to 15. That only generates, if we went to 15, that would only generate $300,000. So you see, that doesn't really solve much of the puzzle. I hope you all got the, this long spreadsheet that shows, if we were to, if the town, I'm sorry, if the fire department were to build a station and purchase an aerial truck and an engine, yeah, sorry, and then hire the personnel to do, to man the aerial truck, then you see what the impact on their budget would be. And until fiscal year 2025, they will be in a negative situation, and a very negative situation in the early years, because Chatham Park revenue to the town will not be enough to offset the cost. So, I mean, one option is to delay doing this until 2025, but I think at that point, you're going to be, and we're going to be in dire straits if we're needing a ladder So does anybody have any questions about the fire situation? Chief, do you have anything you wanted to add?
So let me understand, so you're saying that the county is collecting 12 and 1/4 cents per thousand evaluation of accessible property? And that the town likewise is doing, providing 12 and 1/4 cents based on corporate limits value?
Not exactly.
No?
No. Okay. There's a kind of a total amount that the town is appropriating for fire services?
Which does not equal 12 and 1/4 cents.
Well, I don't know whether it does or not.
Not, not right now, it doesn't. But it will, it's upcoming, but.
So that's the methodology we talked about to hold the fire department, to keep the fire department in, from going into a negative situation.
Okay. So if that's the case, as property gets annexed, there will not be a loss of revenue? Does it's 12 and a half, 12 and 1/4 cents in or out?
If the town maintains that level of funding, yes. But I did want to raise it as an issue, because if you don't maintain that level of funding, then there would be a loss. Okay. So in presenting our request to the developer, we had some things that we were asking for their assistance with. These are the things that overlap with the town. So again, we met with Commissioner Fiocco and Mayor Perry and talked through each item on the list, and whether that properly belongs under the town's purview, or the county should address separately with Chatham Park. And so, the items on the left, and you should have a copy of the request, and we made presentations, I think, on multiple occasions of the county's request for the additional elements. So most of the items are pulled straight from that list. So what we discussed when we met with the mayor and Commissioner Fiocco is that affordable housing will be under, completely under the town's purview, also the school sites, and how those school sites get donated from the developer, that you will deal with transit, the county has asked that planning, that transit planning occur with Chatham Transit, since that's our homegrown transit provider. And we would also, we also provided input that we would like the ability to connect to Chatham Park's trails. The county's getting ready to do a trails master plan, and we envision that we'll be building trails in the not-too-distant future. And so, having that connectivity provides a nicer experience, both for Chatham Park residents and county residents and town residents. So those were the things that we talked about, or the things that were on our additional elements with. The thing that was not was what we do about the fire station. So we had a, we didn't really agree to how we would handle the fire station. I think it's going to have to be a partnership between the county, the town, and Chatham Park to address it. One thing was, since your additional elements covers public facilities, that you could include the land and the station in additional elements. So I'll leave that at that. And the county would, we did ask for land donation for libraries and EMS, but you would, in our additional elements, feed that, but you would put that in our column. So if that's something we want to pursue with Chatham Park, that's what we would do. And then, we also asked for access to the developer's vertical assets. We're getting ready to do a radio, emergency radio project, and so we will discuss with them. And then, finally, one of the things that we might ask for is equipment for the fire station. So that's kind of where we left it in our brief meeting. I welcome any feedback or concerns about that. Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'm glad to see that, hopefully, we're going to get it to the direction of Chatham Park with its fire inflation. But I understand that Chatham Park has donated school site land, correct?
Well, there's been discussion between the developer and the school system about how that would happen in the future. They haven't actually donated the parcels, but how that process would work.
Okay. And also, the land for the fire station, nothing of that has been discussed, it's just proposed?
So to my knowledge, I, the county has presented its list of requests to the developer. But when we met with the town, we agreed, because there are items that overlap with your additional elements, that there are things that belong on your list, and there are things that belong on our list. And it was felt that the land for the fire station is something that the town should address.
Okay. Tonya, you mentioned this cooperation with fire, but in fact, the other, I'd say, major item that needs coordination, cooperation with the town and the county is clearly the schools.
Yes. So we want what the schools want. We fully support what they've asked for.
And so, what we need to know is exactly what is that? Because when we go through the additional element of facilities, that will be a time of discussing those issues.
So I've suggested that the superintendent reach out to the town manager and make sure that they are in the loop when you have that discussion. I would recommend strongly that they be part of that discussion.
And in one of our work sessions, one of the requests we made, were made, was for there to be quarterly meetings in the county, school board, Chatham Park, and town, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, looking at each other, communication is clear. So I hope we can get that established, and I think Brian will be reaching out to kind of set that up.
So is your interest in having the chair and the vice chair of the county board meet with the mayor and the commissioner from the town? Or do you want the full boards at those meetings?
I honestly don't think the full board should be there. I think it could get too complex that way.
Okay. So that sounds like.
That's my opinion, as one member of this board.
Other thoughts on that?
I think it's helpful for us all to go if we can.
I think it'd be better for all of us to go, even if it's not specifically to comment or make work. We definitely need to know what's going on. You've been in the loop about that. People always ask us about what's going on with schools, what's going on with beds, so it will definitely be helpful for us that can.
So the county defers to the town about how you want to organize. If you want us to organize the meeting, we're glad to do that. If you would prefer to do that, we're happy to hand that off to you.
Ms. Pascal, I apologize if I missed this, but I, regarding the discussion on negotiations between the school board and Chatham Park investors, I had the impression that the school board had signed off on a document that was an agreement.
So there is no formal contract or agreement? The, my understanding, the document that exists is a letter from the school system to the developer outlining what they think they've agreed to. Is there?
No. We have an agreement with the school board. And it's been, it's in the elements, been in the element for the last six months.
I think someone needs to talk with the schools, because that is not what their impression is. impression is.
So is there anything that's included in the vertical assets? Is it basically towers, radio towers, that that's what that means?
It mostly is like water tanks.
Water tanks, okay.
But if there would be any cell towers in Chatham Park, that's certainly, you'd certainly be interested in those. So the next steps, as we see it, is the county is, that my board of commissioners wants your, for lack of a word, better word, blessing for us to move forward with the special assessment district and the negotiation with the developer. So we'll also need to finalize what the town's asking for and what the county's asking for, or what each of us will cover. And then the county would move forward with our negotiations with Chatham Park. My board will decide on whether to establish the s- special assessment district, and if so, then we will begin that, the last sub-process that I outlined earlier. Happy to answer additional questions.
I just have one question about, one thing that's not on the list that I wonder if should be, is just broadband internet access? Is that something to be in here somewhere or is that separate?
So the county would love access to the broadband infrastructure, but that's not something that we included in our list. But if, if the town would like to include that in your additional elements, I'm sure my board will not, will not say no to that.
Well, I don't know that that's one of the items that is eligible for reimbursement.
No, and I should have said the fire, if, if the fire station, et cetera, was eligible for reimbursement through the special assessment district, we could include that in our special assessment, but it's not eligible. So that's one of the challenges that we have. And we, it would be ideal if we could just include it in the assessment, but we can't.
All the items on the board. In fact, when we had a joint meeting almost two years ago, maybe more, one of the items that I was questioning was schools. At the time, the answer was no. But can we change the legislation and include schools?
Yes, we can, we can include schools. There is a, there's a challenge to including schools. I'm not sure it's insurmountable. That is, remember that the, the property has to benefit from whatever's funded by the special assessment district in proportion to the benefit. So if you had schools built in Chatham Park, in theory, unless other funding sources were used, then only Chatham Park students could attend those schools. And that would be a issue for the school to manage, you know, attendance, things like that kind of thing. But like I said, it may not be insurmountable.
So we have a few more minutes to hear from Tom DeSantis. Are there any more questions for Renee Pascal? Thank you, Renee.
So I'm going to talk a little bit, not cover the ground, actually, there'll be a little of covering some of the ground Renee covered, but I'm going to be looking a little bit at talking about special assessment districts at a broader context of how they're used around the country. I've had some experience with them in other states, what their impact has been, more particularly about how this one works, how this one is proposed to work. And this is more out of conversation with some of you about questions you had about the district, their impact on different aspects of, of Chatham Park. So one of the things that we've been talking about is the fact that about 900 acres of Chatham Park is set aside for commercial developments, and that's mostly employment. So that makes it unique among just about any project or any community in North Carolina. It's the first one. There are others like this in other parts of the country, but this is really, again, as we say, a live workplace in the city. And the, you know, the entitlement to the zoning that costs $22 million to people in commercial space, a lot of that happens along Chatham Parkway, I-64 and I-501. So this is where we have a pretty substantial increase in the tax base. And unlike residential development, which you can do a cul-de-sac, you can do a little neighborhood, and you can sell new units, with commercial development, you have to upfront much for sizable infrastructure in order to be effective in attracting employers. So this is showing you these four images, I know it's hard to read, but this is really covering some of what Renee covered already. But we're looking at, and this is what we're here, we're looking at roads, water, sewer, and trails. And the bulk of the assessment, with 244 million in the estimated price, is roads. The water and truck lines are about another 200 million. The engineering is always a factor, so that's about 48. And then trails are about 35. So all of these improvements are improvements that once made are contributed to the state or the town. That's how it's envisioned. So these are basically thoroughfares. So if you're doing, if you're doing a little residential community, you typically go through four-lane divided highways. So these collector roads are not needed necessarily, needed as an aggregate for, you might say, usually all this residential, but primarily along those roads, you would have commercial uses. And so this is, this is the rationale, is that these larger roads, which again, Chatham Parkway would be the eastern bypass, it would be taking traffic off of, off of, out of Main Street, out of, out of Pittsburgh. Also, it would be serving a regional focus. So while the tax assessment is going against residents and businesses in Chatham Park, this is a public improvement. So the draft residential project projected monthly assessment fees, and these are drafts, but they, they're, the idea is that most people pay these in their mortgage. It's, it's just part of pestero and other property taxes and just paid monthly. And so we had said the average would be about $500 on an annual basis, but that average is for the average house, and no house is average. So you have more estate, larger properties, and you have smaller lots. And so the idea is to, to have it vary. And again, we haven't completed a discussion of this. We've just been surfacing these ideas with the county, and obviously, we'd have to talk about what the scale would be. The idea would be that there'd be an overall average. Beyond that, there would also be fees on the commercial. And these were illustrative, and we can go into detail, but the idea would be for retail, corporate office, flex office, and hospitality, there would be different fee structures. You know, so this would be maybe for a small, you know, 3,000, 4,000 square foot, 4,000 ground over square foot restaurant would be in 150 a month. Corporate office of 25,000 would be, on a typical office building, that would be a fourth floor, would be about 800 a month. You know, spec space, spec flex space on the semi-industrial space would be less, and the hotel would be like 1,000 a month. So depending on where you were, they would be paying, you know, a fee. This is exactly the chart Renee covered, so I'm not going to go over it yet, but just to say that's one point billion dollar increase.
Excuse me, Tom, the prior two slides?
Mm-hmm.
Do you not have this, is that correct?
That's correct. But they're now on your system, so you can have it.
Good.
The one thing that, that the Davenport study and that the county focused has not included were some, some of the things that were discussed in Michael Walton's study, which is that this will be generating 60,000 jobs in Chatham County. And so when you're looking at this, part of the incentive is not just the impact on the county budget, which obviously is an appropriate focus for the county and appropriate focus for Davenport, but we say that there's another side to this. And so that's where I'd like to start with, showing how it's played out in some other areas. So as you know, as many of you know, I worked in Texas for a number of years. Now Renee showed you that in San, in, in North Carolina, we have three special assessment districts. That compares to over 1,500 in Texas. Some states, some counties in Texas have over 100 special assessment districts. And what this chart is showing, and I apologize for having to walk over to see it, in the chart on the left, you're looking at total property tax levies across Texas, and it generates about 22.5 billion. But if you look at that, 11% of that, the biggest one, ISD stands for independent school district. The biggest taxes are for school districts, and then you have counties at 14%, cities at 16%. But special purpose districts make up 11%, which is shown then on the right chart at 2.4 billion. Well, most of that is for hospital and junior colleges, which are 44% for hospitals, 24% for junior colleges. But then if you look at the water and related districts at 29%, that's almost all private development. So that's projects like the one I worked on in the Woodlands. But additionally, you'll see a sliver that's for road districts. Well, the road districts are not as big because most of the people looking for the water districts are not building thoroughfares. So a project like the Woodlands, where we had four-lane divided thoroughfares, we had road districts. But other communities that didn't have, that were even large just cul-de-sacs, didn't qualify for road districts. And then also, they have a sliver for development and improvement districts. And so often, we would, we would also have improvement districts that had some special purposes, and we had those in the Woodlands as well. This is a picture, this is the Woodlands employed municipal utility districts, where we would front the cost of road infrastructure, we would front the cost of water and sewer, and then be reimbursed in the method that's similar to the special assessment district here. This is a photograph of the Huntsman Chemical Building, and I worked particularly, this is a, a, an employer that I negotiated bringing into the Woodlands when I was there, 700 jobs, all high-paying, professional, mostly graduate-level people, jobs. And we wouldn't have gotten this if we hadn't had the district that had prepaid the roads and put in the utilities. We just would not have gotten those jobs with that company. Now, some people have said, well, won't that hurt home sales to have these assessments? The Woodlands was one of the most successful communities in the country. Our people were happy to move into the community. It did not adversely impact sales. And as Renee mentioned, there is plenty of public information. No one moved into the Woodlands unless they just simply refused to read any of the documents they were signing. No one could move into the Woodlands and not know about the districts. And, and then there was, you know, they have a webpage, the districts all have webpages, so you can find out about them. So looking at what the impact of the district is, and this is from Data USA, so you can look this up, but the Woodlands is 44 years old. If you said in Chatham County right now, our median household income is 56,000, the Woodlands is 109,000. Poverty rate in the county is 13.6%, in the Woodlands it's 4.59%. We have, you know, property values are higher. And this, so these districts, which are, as you see, there's over 1,500 of them in Texas, these districts are used to advance public infrastructure. And some, you might say, well, the developer is getting paid back. Well, the developer has to get paid back one way or the other. But by doing the district, it can be done over time. So people can, this assessment is taking some of the cost of building those improvements and spreading the repayment over time. Then we looked at, I haven't worked in Florida, but I wanted to use as an example Lake Nona. Lake Nona is in Orlando, and in, in Florida, they have what are called community development districts, CDDs. So every state has a different name for it. But, and I know it's hard to read, you have copies. Today, public infrastructure has been $200 million of public infrastructure in Lake Nona, and the future expected is at 1.7 billion. So they're looking at a much more robust contribution from, in terms of public infrastructure. And they've been successful with the money they've gotten so far. So I'll show you a little bit about what they've done. First, they've won a $600 million hospital, which is the Orlando Veterans Medical Center. It is massive when you see it in real life. It is absolutely the biggest hospital I've ever seen. They have also gotten Central Florida, pardon me, the University of Central Florida has built a new school here. So if you go to the University of Central Florida and you want to go to med school, you're going to be in Lake Nona. They built their med school there, and that's the building on the right. The building on the left is a biomedical research center. So they've got, again, a kind of a group of people focused on graduate research and then a hospital, a part of a medical school. They also got New Morris Children's Hospital to build a facility here. So they've really created almost a medical city with some of these, with, again, with these, with these community development district bonds, and they, they floated bonds with the district there. That's, and so I didn't work on Lake Nona, but I've just watched it because it's become really a startling success story. And all of this has also generated, KPMG, which is one of the four biggest accounting, consulting, international firms, has put $400 million into building a learning development and innovation facility. So they're pulling people from all of their senior staff from all over the world, come to Lake Nona for retraining and training, and it's also where they make presentations to their clients. So these are things that result from these investments. And I think the same thing is, the idea with Chatham Park is, this is a, an opportunity to advance the infrastructure that helps attract these businesses. Baldwin Park is another project, it's on the north side of Atlanta, pardon me, Orlando. It's just mostly residential, has a little bit of commercial. But I looked there at what were their community development district, I think I spelled it wrong, fees on a $400,000 house, and they were $125 a month. So they're about twice the highest rate we were talking about for our special assessment district. And that's up and running, and it's been a very successful community. Also, just stepping back and looking at, you might say, well, why is this relevant, this discussion of, you know, Texas or Florida? And in looking at, this is a list of top technology regions, and the Texas, pardon me, the Florida High Tech District comes in number four after Silicon Valley, New York, Washington DC, and then Florida. I think the Research Triangle is like number eight. And then if you combine the three Texas regions of Dallas, Austin, and Houston, you'd have a, if you did one big circle, it would be probably about as big. And so these areas where you're seeing, now they're not doing that, obviously, in, in California or New York, but in Texas and in Florida, you're seeing that they've had a tremendous impact, having these municipal utility districts and having these CDDs. They've had a very successful opportunity to attract and grow jobs in the Midwest. One other project I did work on is in Nevada, and it's Summerlin. It's actually kind of part in Las Vegas and part, it's a, it's a kind of a suburb of Las Vegas. And so we had a special assessment district, pardon me, in Nevada, they're called special improvement districts, SIDS. And there were SIDS to launch Summerlin, so they wouldn't have been able to start Summerlin without a SIDS. Today, Summerlin has over 100,000 people living in the community, and we did this kind of a, this is a picture of Summerlin, these two pictures I want to show you, because when I show you the next picture, I can't control the image. It's Las Vegas, they just, because Summerlin is in the Las Vegas area, when you do this analysis of how the, of data, they pick the picture, so I don't get to change the pictures. Look at this picture and don't react to the next one. Okay, so that is not Summerlin. That is the strip. But I looked at Pittsburgh versus Summerlin, and you can see the, you know, I can't say that it's exclusively the SIDS that do, that make the difference, but, and this is just Summerlin South, which unfortunately does not have most of the employment, which is in the north. But I couldn't pull that data out of Data USA. But anyway, the idea being that, you know, in terms of poverty level, in terms of net median household incomes, you're seeing that the, where you're seeing these instruments, and again, we've asked the state, we spent two years asking the state to give us the instrument we want to hear, you see a positive economic development. So from our perspective, and this is the major, really one of the major aspects, the, the special assessment district accelerates development of public improvements. It makes it less risky to make that investment because some portion of the return is fixed. Chatham Park can remain competitive because home builders and businesses pay for improvements over time and not upfront. If we don't have the district, we'd have to be going, when, when businesses wanted to come in, it was very hard to build a part of something for one business. You really have to, businesses want to know that they're not going to be all there by themselves. They want to know they're part of a district that will grow over time. It generates faster job creation in the county and the town. It will grow the tax base and help the county achieve its economic goals. And in this instance, growth pays for growth. As these improvements are being made, the growth that comes from them is what's paying for the growth. So this was just a summary, and I tried to address some of the questions some of you raised in raised in conversations with you. I don't know if I've done a good job of doing that. But I wanted to kind of take a step back, because I think there's been a lot of discussion of, well, we've never, we don't know much about this instrument, it's not really been tried very much in North Carolina, we don't know, you know, is it going to have an impact on housing, is it going to have an impact, what kind of impacts will it have? And there is just a lot of experience with this in other parts of the country. And what makes, this one actually very distinct is that we're not looking to float debt, we're not looking to issue bonds, so that this is, or at least if we would, we would do it only years later when there was more stability and it was very clear that it made sense, but not now. So there's not the risk that, you know, many people try to float bonds right away. We're not doing that. And that makes it a more conservative instrument because it's paying back over time. So, questions for Tom, Neil, Sandra?
Well, actually, Tom, thank you. Yes, your presentation and your comparables are in other states, and I'm sure you've looked at North Carolina markets and how this additional incremental burden will measure up with other communities there.
Actually, let me say, when you say incremental burden, the customers still have to reimburse, they still have to pay costs if the business profits. It's just how they pay the costs. So it's not incremental burden. They have to pay back one way or the other, or the business doesn't work. So it's just a form of repayment, one form that's versus another, that's more secure from a perspective and allows it to be accelerated. But it's not incremental, the prices would have to be higher, or we would just have to, or we would just miss opportunities.
My curiosity remains, how will this compare? And I'm sure that you all have done those kinds of studies, but how might you share that kind of intelligence with us?
Well, the main way in which it compares is if you have better public improvements. So in this case, you're accelerating the trunk lines for water and sewer, for example, which would accelerate business coming here. The faster you have jobs, the more attractive the homes are, because you just have a few more reasons, again, that live, work, play experience is one where, as we're making this more attractive to businesses, we're thereby making it more attractive to the employees who are hired by that business. So that, in the Woodlands, we used to call it a virtuous cycle. You know, we, a company would find a site that they liked, they would move, and then within two years, we would start to see their employees buying houses in the Woodlands. So it's something that reinforces. So in that instance, you know, a community that does not have employment is at a disadvantage, if you would, if you have people who like to live where they live, near where they want.
I wish we had more time to carry on with some of these details. We're greatly trying to think it, it's about five past seven, and I think we need to get on to our regular agenda. So, Tom, you'll remain open, I'm sure, to questions via the internet or on an individual basis?
We can come back another time. Thank you.
Well, one thing I think would be helpful for me is, I think there's a detailed list of projects.
Yes.
And you could provide more information on those projects and be really helpful.
You mean the particular projects, it would be, the roads, the sewer, water?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. This was meant to be helpful.
Before we close out, there's just one thing tonight that I wanted to correct because there's been so much misinformation about schools for four to five years. The statement that is in the public facilities document for schools is a negotiated and agreed upon conversation with the school staff, and it was taken to the school board and voted on before it was turned into a deal. So either they know, want to see with the school board, and then vote it down.
I'm just a little confused by the idea that it's embedded in the additional element, the MOU, I guess, with the school board? Is there an MOU or an agreement of some sort?
There is not a written MOU with the school board.
Okay.
No. That is where we thought it was needed to be put for everybody to have it in writing. There is not, there is a earlier letter, like two years earlier, that we were going to work together, we were going to donate the site, but it doesn't go into the detail that is in the additional element.
So you, okay, so you're folding that, your general understanding with the school board into the proposed additional element for schools?
That's right. And it's very detailed exactly how a site gets identified, accepted, and donated.
Renee?
May I make a suggestion, is that verbiage from the additional elements, be shared back with the school board? Because I think that's where the disconnect is from there.
And I think that's part of what I was referring to earlier by saying this coordination and cooperation, because clearly the talent is not provided schools, counties, you need to coordinate.
It may or may not have been shared with the county board, but it was shared with, I personally addressed the board, presented it to the board, and the board voted on it.
The school?
The school board.
Right.
So they're very aware, they negotiated the purpose and voted on.
I guess the confusion is, there is no, the question was, is there an agreement between the development and the school? There is no signed agreement, I think, knowledge. I think the school needs to understand that what you've included in your additional elements is what they request. I'm not sure that that's what, and I understand the school board approved it, I'm not saying that they need to, the circle needs to be complete, and everybody needs to be on the same page.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We will now proceed to the regular agenda, and so we'll call into session at seven o'clock For Monday, March the 25th, 2018. As is our practice, we'll ask that we open the meeting in a moment. Thank you very much. And now Jay Farrell will lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
We are one rise, please. We are the United States of America, and in a republic where religion stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the living justice of our.
Thank you very much. You have the for you, the agenda for this evening. Are there motions to propose or amend the agenda in any way?
A motion to approve of the corrections to the Mills and Aradaski proceeding?
Second. A motion to approve the consent agenda made by Michael Fiore, co-seeded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please, in the seat by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to go into public hearing? Moved by Michael Fiore, co-seeded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please, in the seat by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And the planned unit development for Mills South is the project for, do you think Victoria Vayner can introduce it? And then we have speakers for the public hearing with respect to that project.
We have a special use permit to the 7th and 8th 05. Orange, the development plans for a planned unit development for a PUD located along the northern end of North Masonic Street. The applicant is proposing a PUD consisting of 42 townhomes in the R-10 zoning district where PUDs require a special use permit. The townhomes will be located on the two most northern parcels totaling 5.4 acres. The maximum density for a PUD is 12 units per acre, and the proposed density for this PUD is 7.7 units per acre. The proposed minimum lot size is 1,500 square feet, and the proposed minimum lot width is 18 feet. The recommendation is to hold the public hearing and then forward their requests to the county.
Speakers? Well, first let me ask if the board has any questions to start with, or maybe proceed to speakers from the public. We will do that. Randy Boller is the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm here to speak on behalf of local nonprofit Sustainable Prosperity, as well as a board member for Main Street Pittsburgh, but not as a position for Main Street Pittsburgh. Just wanted to remind the board that this area, back in 2007, I think the last board member remaining would be Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin, was a place that we were looking to do some form of mixed-use and affordable housing that did not get done because we didn't have the appropriate zoning and there wasn't time. And I think this is a good use of the property to redevelop it and to create opportunity. I would just hope that the board would consider, as we're doing this, what's going on in the entire corridor, how we could improve that corridor, how it might be brought into the town, for what else is going on with Main Street and other opportunity, and consider the possibilities of some form of affordable living within this project. But we support the rezoning, we just hope that you'll consider those options that have been on the table in the past.
Thanks, Renee. The next speaker signed up is Kalavadeen. He's comfortable.
Hello, I'm a resident of 365 Thompson Street. Our property, Mary Brewer Rigan and I, the Mary Brewers here with us, is lies to the east of this property. We connect to this property, we connect to Chana Mills, and our property circles around to Thompson Street, at 365 Thompson Street here. Mr. Farrell's home, a couple hundred yards from it. I have, it, the central, our property is listed on National Register of Historic Places, the entire acreage. It is contiguous with the downtown historic district, contiguous with Chana Mills. And as such, it forms a cradle all the way around this area that we're talking about. I am profoundly interested and concerned by the quality of this land between where we are and the historic district. There is no gem more beautiful than Salisbury Street, east and west. Scattered all through this neighborhood, some houses are in the historic district, some are not. So it's just not with a passing interest that I am here. The, I believe quality things can be mixed and matched, like clothes and furniture. If it's quality, you can mix it together and it looks fine. I think this property may be suitable for townhome type development. My biggest concern with this is the density of it. I think I asked Jeff Jones about what the percentage of impermeable surface was, housing, parking lots, and so forth. He told me 58 percent. And that application, I think, was for 9.3 acres, which included five acres plus the two acres for commercial property, plus the two lots on Small Street for another 2.3 acres. The slope of this property is comparable to the slope right out here next to Town Hall. It is a 20-some-foot drop from Masonic Street to the back of their property. Our property began at the back of that, it drops another eight to nine feet, within about 60 feet. We could have a water hole if we had a water source, though we don't have the water source. Of that 58 percent paved and covered surfaces, I'd be willing to suggest over 99, 95 percent of it was directly uphill from us. We are underneath roughly every bit of that 58 percent, or nine acres, is basically included on the five acres that we're talking about these townhomes on. Now, drainage is a major problem. I say this for one very special reason. In 2004, we didn't have a creek across our property. Well, Chatham Mills Road, partial portion of Chatham Forest was approved, it's a very nice subdivision. Drained about 60 yards of Chatham Mills Road, did a torrential drop right uphill from our property. We have a creek across, we have a creek bed, eight feet wide, where every time it rains, it gathers the water, it flushes it to one eight-inch pipe right onto our property. We have a creek bed across our property. It becomes a very, very real thing. I noticed their plan, I think, called for a holding pond to the south on the lots, close to the lots on Small Street, exactly where, I'm not sure. I think drainage is a major concern. I don't want, have to get involved in litigation to stop this, to stop the drainage problems that may occur. It is horribly unreasonable for them to dump their water, wastewater on us just for drainage because it's cheaper for them. They've got a drainage pond, they ought to use the holding pond. I am concerned, Lord has, we've got a fantastic neighborhood. There are a variety of uses. There's some trailer parks there that are pretty nice places, and there's some trailer parks that are absolutely horrible. We have some abandoned dwellings, we have, we have a neighborhood at risk. And if you go and you do a few wrong things, we're going to go really, really downhill. I am concerned that we are putting 42 units on five acres, and there's not sufficient traffic arteries for it. Putting a 65-foot road right in front of it, okay, that's good. You go there to the trailer park right between that and Thompson Street, hey, you're back to the little road again. You get up to Jerry Clapp's Laundry, you don't have it by 40, 42 feet in there. That's where the traffic is going to go if it's legal. Now...
Excuse me, are you close to winding up, or do you want to take the time of Mary Brewer Ragan? Would that be?
No, she said I could take the time. Do we have a three-minute limit?
Well, it's a possibility, it's been five or so.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
The developers have in their control the ability to moderate the problem of traffic. This property had, is connected to Small Street, and it's right there adjacent to Masonic Street. Now, it would take a little bit of work, but they, with a different plan, they could connect, have a second entrance directly onto Small Street, there on the two lots. They could put everything in there, and yes, they'd have to build about 90 feet of road. But they're already moving 10 feet of dirt from one side of lot to the other, and it wouldn't be that much of a issue to go ahead and build a road connecting to Small Street. They have the land for it, they have the, and it's modest. And you, and this, if we don't do that, then someone's going to ask the town, "Why don't you condemn Jerry Clapp's Laundry and build him a nice intersection out there? Why don't you widen the road for the whole thing?" It is unreasonable to ask the town to pay for things that they should be paying for. So, again, drainage is a major concern, and one other issue, they say we have 42 units. Yes, but you've got one other space reserved at the front where it is not unreasonable. to think they'll come back in and say we want to put another 18 units there, which is what that's reserved for. And with those, no telling how much paved area I'm going to have uphill from us. Now, I have maintained our property in a natural state. We provide walking trails for the public use. We're glad for the public to continue to use it. And as such, I think that, I don't mind development a bit in the world at our point, but not to the point that it attracts and destroys everything around it. And so I would ask you not to approve the plug, the planned plug, with the design configuration it is now configured at, as being projected to you. I might say also, not one time has anybody from the developer spoken to me or spoken to my sister about their plans. They don't have to. There's no requirement to. It is, I think, what we would expect here in Pittsburgh. Now, good honor, Ms. Mayor, I am very sorry if I talk too long when I'm on. Of course, when I spoke to Mr. Jones about it, he said, no, no, you're not restricted to only time at the public hearing. So with all, with all fairness, I would like to continue this conversation. I invite the town individually as a group to meet me at my house, and let's walk out to the woods, and let me show you this property from the backside.
We also welcome written comments as well. They can be placed in the, in the record and distributed to the board members.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't think I don't believe that's correct with this type of hearing, especially use hearing.
Oh, thank you. Yes. Thank you. Well, given that, that we've just been corrected here on the issue of the time limitation, Mary Brewer Reagan, would you like to speak as well?
I think, I think he said enough. I can say other things, but I think we're good.
Very good, thank you. And the final speaker is Tom Roberts. Tom, are you down?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the board. I'm Tom Roberts. I'm here with my attorneys tonight to speak at the public hearing and discerning the proposal. I can see a lot of growth and development going on in Pittsburgh that I consider to be very positive. I see this project as having the potential to be a very positive project and have a positive effect on Chatham Mills and the town. And there's a couple of things that came to mind though, the lack of the traffic study, the lack of any information concerning traffic arteries, how this property would function with 42 townhomes. And then there's the other unknown element of the potential commercial development up to 20,000 to 25,000 square feet. There's no information about what might be used there, what might be proposed, what kind of traffic it'll generate. I'm at Chatham Mills 21 years ago and have been working diligently to preserve the building, to develop the property and to move things forward. Since I watched Chatham Mills, it was a two lane road to Chapel Hill. Things have changed over the last 20 years and changed for the better. There's lots of growth and lots of positive things. I would also like to talk about for a minute the traffic problems that we have experienced over the last 20 years from the Sonic Street. It's been seen as a cut through from Sonic Street to 15501 through Chatham Mills. I've thought about a number of ways to deal with these problems. I have gone to the expense of putting in speed bumps and a five on the curb around there where people would come speeding around the curb, that's helped some. I've also thought about posting signs for no through traffic at the beginning of Chatham Mills property, worked ties into the Sonic Street. Haven't done that because I don't want to take the wrong approach or a neighborly approach, but that's something that I'll have to consider in the future if there's not some solution to the traffic problems that potentially will be generated with this project on that side of town. Down, the project has a, has a big potential to have a positive effect on town, but without the details of knowing what happens with traffic studies and things, I think there's more information called for. There have been over the last several years, a number of proposals to use part of Chatham Mills property for your drive through or road through Chatham Mills and considering lots of projects. Chatham Mills is an entryway of the Pittsburgh, and it needs to be done well and with a lot of thought to make that something that people don't drive by and wonder what happened to them. It needs to be done very well. And we are considering different projects and different, there could be a road, public road that comes into Chatham Mills. I noticed on this plan, there's a stubout into Chatham Mills for a future road. There's no guarantee that we will have a road that could accommodate that stubout in the future, and we would oppose it if it didn't, didn't enter into our project plans as we see them and preserving the property. Again, I'm not opposed to this project. Basically looking at townhouses, it could have a positive effect, but I think there has not been enough information given about how the traffic would work and how the exit onto Thompson Street will work. Is it going, is there going to be a stoplight put on 15501? I went to the expense and, and along the part planning to put in turn lanes at Chatham Mills a number of years ago, great expense, to make that driveway safer. And with a number of cars pouring into Chatham Mills on the private property without proper, proper traffic artery considerations, it's going to be a mess. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Tom Roberts. Is the developer here and does the developer wish to make a statement?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Landon Lovelace. I'm a president of upperclass engineering. I'm here on my behalf of myself and Mike Dasher, and he sends his policies, and he's not able to be here. He had a previously scheduled overseas trip that he had to keep. I would like to actually run through a presentation and then also if I may, address some of Mr. Reagan and Mr. Roberts' concerns, and also the floor, if you guys have any questions. So you've also received the project narrative, and I think Victoria hit on some of this in her overview, so I'm going to just brush through some of this. Brian, do you know if this...
Just keep going.
For some reason, these pointers never work on the TV screens. As Mr. Roberts and Victoria mentioned, our site is here, if correctly, Jason, from Chatham Mill. It's on a large corridor between Chatham Mill and the Hillsborough Business District and We do feel that this is an important corridor and that it doesn't need to be done right. I think a lot of the concerns that were brought up tonight, I think getting the first piece of development in there and doing it right can help spur good development all the way down that corridor. It does keep with Pittsburgh's vision of the future land use, which would be higher density, urban, lockable, pedestrian friendly mixed use. As we mentioned before, this portion that we're looking at tonight is specifically a PUD, but especially use plan, or just the residential portion of the development, which if you're looking at the map, is basically this part. There is a little, two acres of future commercial development as well that would have to come in for its own plan. And the small parcel towards the front that's slated for future development was also, we've gone back and forth on that, and we had slated for seven more townhome units in two conversations with staff, just kind of looking at what that Masonic Street corridor really wants to be. We had the back and forth, we had the, we had the units fronted internally towards the parking, so it was consistent with the rest of the development, but the idea that maybe those units should be pushed up to Masonic Street and truly have it be more of a pedestrian friendly kind of open to Masonic area. So we pulled those off, and we're going to be in the process of trying to work through a text amendment to allow for some live work there or some residential up above, retail or office type space, which unfortunately right now there's nothing in the ordinance that allows that. So that's, that's why we had pulled that as a future development parcel, specifically because that, that is an important corridor, and we agree that having something that fronts up there would be a good use. We've got, we've got some slides a little bit later. We also understand that there's a historic nature to this corridor. As Mr. Reagan and Mr. Roberts both mentioned, there's, there's houses that are on the historic register, there's some that are, that are in really good shape, there's some that are not so much. So the vision for the development also keeps, you know, keeps the old town vernacular with some brick and the quality materials. And we're not talking vinyl siding, we're talking some stone or, or brick veneer, hard plank siding and those type of things. And, and then ultimately, the future mixed use portion and, and the commercial floor would also have architecture and facade that would match the commercial piece. We've, we've got a ton of open space and amenities, so I'm going to back up a few slides. To see that at a reasonable scale, we kind of split the site into two pieces. So the site is actually kind of, it's got a little tail down here, and that tail was pulled up over here. So this area is, is an area of forested and vegetated land that's, you know, looks like it was probably harvested some point 40, 50 years ago, it's kind of smaller sapling type trees, where the area that's down along Small Street is a lot older growth, there's some really, really nice trees there, some larger pines, some hardwoods. And there's also a stream corridor that runs through there. So it lends itself perfectly to be kind of the, the amenity area and an open space and kind of maintain the environmental characteristics of that area. That'll tie in a little bit later when, when we start talking about the possibility of making a roadway connection to Small Street, because we looked at that, we've gone through many, many iterations of the plan. So in addition to having that area that's down in the south of the stream corridor as kind of an open space and a natural trail area, we've got small amenities tucked in all throughout the site, where there's little pocket parks, if you will, or areas that will have, you know, just small hardcaked areas, areas for residents to gather, economy and sit and talk. Additionally, as part of the PUD and townhome requirements, we've got a rec space down here. So we're actually, we're proposing a 20 by 30 open air shelter with storage and bathrooms, as well as a tot lot with a playground and a community garden. So the storage that we're picturing would be generally to serve the community garden area back there, as well as, I'm going to keep popping back between slides. When this future commercial is developed, the intent is likely to develop around a central corridor, courtyard, and that rec site, that open air shelter will provide a really good opportunity to have small events, maybe little farmers markets or community meetings, things of that nature that can really pull from not only the residential piece but the commercial piece. As we mentioned, and I'll address Mr. Reagan's concerns specifically about the stormwater and the drainage in a minute, but the, the area down to the south, there's an existing stream corridor that runs up through there, and kind of runs through our property and then as it continues north up towards Chatham Forest, it diverges away from the property line a little bit, so he's correct, there's, you know, at one slot, the stream's very near the property line, that starts to kind of go northeast away from the property. But that area not only has a buffered stream, but it's also got a couple areas of wetland that you can see in the hatch pattern there. So stormwater runoff, drainage, all runs downhill, that is the slot where, where the stormwater management wants to be. We're proposing a wet detention pond that does take all the runoff from, from the whole site. And not only are we meeting the Pittsburgh requirements and all state requirements, but we're actually exceeding them. Pittsburgh goes by the state standards and it's a one year storm. We're actually meeting preposts for all the outside stuff, up to the 100 year storm. And additionally there, so you can, you can kind of see them here, there was, after we went back and walked the site again, we did a tree survey, there's two really nice oak trees there, a 50 inch oak and then about a 35 inch oak, that we went back and reworked the plan to save those. We, we really feel that as you're, as you're coming heading south from the residential corridor and the commercial corridor, that that really frames the conservation area and the stormwater pond, like there're 70, 80 feet tall trees, you know, we've incorporated some retaining walls around them to make sure that we save them and keep them a good health. We've got the trail that manures down over the dam of the pond and it's, it's all kind of keeping that environmentally sensitive area undeveloped for a reason. We did look at putting the road crossing through there, and number one, you've got that stream corridor there, so we would have a, a mass amount of fill over there to get covered underneath and stream impact, as well as the wetland impact there, as well as the fact that those 50 inch tree and the 35 inch tree, those oak trees are in really good shape and have to come out. Additionally, right now, Small Street, if you drive down there, it's not really, I mean, it's paved, but it's, you know, maybe 18 feet wide, there's, there's not much to it right now, and it kind of dead ends. It's sort of a loop, but it's kind of dead ends in the middle of nowhere. Right now, there's not really any connectivity to it. So it was considered in multiple iterations of the plan. These are just some kind of conceptual slides or inspirational slides of what the future commercial and those units along the Sonic that we talked about and we had pulled out, a few slides on the top, it's something that, you know, if you're picturing the Sonic Street out here with those units pulled up, maybe not made up to the Sonic, but enough where you've got a little courtyard in front, and then we could have, you know, whether it be retail or office, where folks could also live above those and, and work, maybe have a, an art gallery downstairs or a, or CPA has his, or her office downstairs. And then additionally, just some schematics of what the mixed use buildings in the future commercial for will look like. As we mentioned, we, we've got a grid pattern set up, we've got wide sidewalks, we've got six foot sidewalks internally. We are widening the Sonic per coordination with, with the town. We, we've worked with the town of Pittsburgh to identify what that future ultimate section needs to be through there. And my guess is that that's all the way from Chatham Mill all the way down to 64, probably further south, and that's basically a 30 foot road section. So we are developing along our coverage, we're widening it out to that ultimate section of the town Pittsburgh is called for. As far as, as far as traffic goes, we did not do a traffic study. I, I've run the ITE trip generation, which is the kind of the go to resource for, for traffic and transportation. And for 42 townhome units, you generate about 22 peak hour trips, which is not a whole lot of traffic. Generally, when we're, when we're looking at developments, we usually don't have a traffic impact analysis, we try to stay triggered to about 100 peak hour trips. That's not the same when we go in the future to do the commercial portions, depending on what they end up being. You know, I heard the number 20, 25,000 square feet thrown out there, that would be great. Ultimately, until we get potential tenants, until we kind of actually ground truth a site plan and will know whether or not we're going to be able to do live units above, we don't have that information. Obviously, when we do, if there's traffic generated there that we call an issue, then we'd be looking at additional improvements or whatever we need to do in the Sonic at that point. I spoke a little bit about the stormwater. Mr. Reagan and Mrs. Reagan, I apologize that we haven't had a chance to talk. We did, we sent notices out for the rezoning, and we didn't really have any response. We didn't have anybody really come and speak at a public hearing. We're certainly open and willing to be collaborative. Mike Dasher's had both conversations with Mr. Roberts. I spoke to Jeff last week or the week before, and he mentioned that she had been in and that she had some current concerns about drainage, so I went back and specifically looked, and not only do we meet preposts for the whole site, so you're, if this is our project, your, your parcel plan is over here. Right now, there's a lot of runoff that comes all the way down here. Right now, there's a lot of runoff that comes all the way down here. Once this is developed, there's a stream here that's going to have a system of catch basins and pipes that will take the runoff down to a wet detention pond. So we're actually decreasing, there's going to be a fourth of the water that's going onto your property post-development than there is pre-development, because a lot of this area from up here that was going on there before is no longer going to go there, it's going to be, it's going to get into the design system that's in the roadways, that come down into the wet detention pond that's got a, an engineered, designed outlet to the I agree with you, Mr. Reagan, that this is a neighborhood at risk, and it's kind of dicey, and it's tough for us as a developer teams to drive potential buyers down there during the day. If you've driven down there, it's a tough sell, you've got to have vision. The trailer park that's erected south of us is, you know, the whole corridor is what it is, and I think in the vision, the town's vision and the future land use plan, I think that corridor has been envisioned as something vibrant and something walkable and something mixed-use. And I really think that this, this project is kind of the catalyst, could be the catalyst that starts that development coming south. Mr. Reagan, you had a concern about the connection to Small Street, and we did look at that, and we talked about specifically the environmental impacts and the reasons why it didn't make sense for us as a developer team to make that connection. You had concerns about the future impermeable in this parcel up along the Sonic Street. We pulled those off so we could come back in and try to get a text amendment to do some live work there, but this plan does limit the impermeable on both the commercial and that future residential parcel. So even though we don't know necessarily exactly how many units or what they're going to look like, it does put a limit on the max impermeable. And if you look at the overall project site, we are, we're just under 60% impermeable, which for a, a commercial and townhome projects, which are typically more dense, 60% is actually really low, it's generally up in the higher 75% to 85% impermeable. Certainly leaving a large portion of that environmentally sensitive area undeveloped helps that number. But that's the intent, and that's good design, that's good urban design. You take the areas that are worth saving, and you save them, and then you maximize the other areas. Yeah, I spoke to traffic a little, again, with 42 townhome units, we've got 22 peak-hour trips generated. Certainly when we come in with another plan in the future for the commercial, that'd be one that we work with town staff to look at when impacts are warranted. You know, I understand the concern, Mr. Roberts, with cut-through traffic on Chatham Mills, and I think part of the way that that gets better, some of the things that you, obviously, you know, some enforcement, some of the things that you talked about, but I also think that as the face of this corridor changes and it's actually widened out to what it's supposed to be with, you know, with wider lanes and with pedestrian-friendly sidewalk and that type of stuff, where folks are actually using other modes of transportation, then hopefully that also helps traffic and cut-through traffic. I think that speaks to, at least hopefully speaks to some of Mr. Roberts' and Mr. Reagan's concerns. If you guys have any questions, I'm open to answering them.
The board does have some questions, thank you.
I have just one comment, and I agree also with Reagan and Mr. Roberts. The traffic already on Thompson Street is, if you go up to 15th and 11th, you have one person trying to make a left-hand turn there, you could be there for eight blocks. I've noticed in the past, too, that a lot of people are coming up Solisberry Street and trying to catch the light, whether they're going across town to go up there, so this has really made a concern to me as myself, is the traffic that's going to be coming off of Thompson, getting to Solisberry, and even going across the Sonic to 64. We really just, even if you come up Solisberry Street by that and come up to the light, at times, there's only one time that you can get one car at that light. Sometimes you cannot have a car coming through the light if you were going west. That's just a few little things that I've run into, and I know Thompson Street's already very narrow.
I think there's going to need to be a light there before you find a turn.
Other questions?
I have a question. My concern is also about traffic. Now, you're proposing to enlarge or expand the Sonic Street from the area, I assume, where your property is all the way up to Chatham Mills.
Along the front of the property.
Along the front. But now, people will be using the other part of the Sonic Street as well, so how do you plan to accommodate that traffic? Because if you're going to increase the roads on to up there, certainly it's going to be an attack for traffic coming up and coming all together. And then you have the big mobile home area, so what are you going to do in reference to that? All of those are my concerns as well, with definitely the traffic and how things are going to flow in reference to it, and then if there are situations, of course, with drainage, I think you addressed that, you said that that would go to the holding pond there, and hopefully that would be efficient in reference to it. But I do have definite, definite concerns regarding your traffic and how you're going to alleviate that traffic. Walking is great for it, and walking trails, that's fine and everything, but I am concerned about that street because it is indeed very narrow to try to accommodate that much traffic.
Let me go some questions. The phasing plan, I think you've identified three phases, and I'm curious as to what the phasing makes reference to as far as improvements. So are all the roadways to be constructed and just the units be constructed in phases? So all the infrastructure's there, but for the buildings?
Basically, yeah. So it is also spoken to earlier about the town being responsible on the site, it falls to the Sonic, we used to, you know, 45th phase coming this out. So, yeah, from a phasing standpoint, the site would have to be graded all at once. There's just not really a physical way to get the, to design grade without grading it all at once. And then the way we've got phased right now, phase one is basically these units, and then phase two would be these other units, so the whole site would be graded at once. And then phase one utilities and curb and gutter paving and all that stuff would be put in, with the intent of coming right behind it with phase two. So to answer your question, yes, the phase lines are more of a kind of a plating exercise, where the buildings would be, and phase two would be delayed. The intent would be certainly to grade everything at once, and then to put down utilities and pavement for phase one, and come right behind it for phase two.
Well, I'm thinking about those two by phase one, whether or not they have any amenities, how they have their trash collected. You've got a dumpster site that's down in phase three, and, you know, I'm assuming that there, the community's going to want to use the dumpster area and not have to haul it themselves or put their wheeled-out carts in front. So that's what I'm thinking about, is when are those things going to happen? And I think honestly, they should be there for the residents, whether or not phase two occurs. I think about the trail, what a great idea. I really like the idea of that trail through the wilderness and crossing the stream, foot bridge, I like that, and it's a real opportunity for connectivity and a beautiful area to walk through. So I think that's good design. What is the material of the trails proposed?
So we've got multiple trails, we've got the internal sidewalks, which you can insert those rails around, we've got, we've got a trail out along the Sonic, which would be eight-foot wide concrete, and then the material of the trails in the woods is just natural. So right now, it could be either gravel or just beaten down. If you go walk out there now, it's already pretty well underbrushed, I mean, there's some thickening and stuff that could be cleared out, but it's already pretty well beaten down. But the intent would be to do something natural surface and not necessarily.
So it wouldn't be accessible?
Not necessarily, but the grades down there are not necessarily accessible, you know, and we're trying to keep it a natural area. We could certainly explore that. I think the hardest part about the accessibility there would be getting back up to Small Street, and that's where, that's where you have the, once you get down off of the pond down into the lower area, it's relatively flat, and then to get back up to Small Street, it's a pretty good straight-up shot.
Is that, so I think that's the perennial stream?
Yes.
So thin air line. Are those trees you're preserving healthy?
We have not had an arborist report, but there's, with, walking out there with an RLA and an engineer that's got 20 years' experience looking at trees, they look very healthy.
Okay, so worth the effort.
Yes.
You're showing pictures of units as two-story, I guess 1,500 and 1,900 square foot, you'd have to be.
Yes.
The plans call for removal of culvert across the Sonic. So presently, that water's crossing the Sonic, coming through the site, going through the perennial stream.
Correct.
And what you're proposing is taking that water and diverting it down the west side of the Sonic.
Correct.
And your notes say that you've analyzed this way up and handled it.
Correct.
What about the culvert at Thompson, because I've seen problems there.
All the way down, so we have that all the way down to Thompson, that's what we can.
Obviously, we're getting there, too. We're going to divert, I don't know how much, but, you know, if we're going to be diverting water, I think we've got to make sure the infrastructure can accommodate it. Because I don't think in general that's, you know, something that you do without investigating I think that's planned.
I have some questions. There was a notation on your site plan for objects to be demolished. I didn't see any buildings on the site, what is to be demolished?
There are not any structures specifically out there to be demolished, but there are bits of pavement, overhead power poles, anything like that, that's a general standard note that we put on all of our plans. There are not structures out there.
The town, unlike the county, does not have a requirement to use a construction and debris landfill. What would you do with matters that you're going to take off the property and demolish?
Well, like I said, there's not, there's not anything out there that we're going to demolish, there are no, there are no structures, there are no houses.
No concrete that you're going to remove?
I mean, if there's anything, it would be a small amount where we would sock up and then build asphalt to where we let the road.
Do I understand correctly that there won't be any buildings in the wetland area? The only thing will be our paths and perhaps benches and the walkway area?
Yes, ma'am, and none of the, none of the benches would be in the wetland areas, there would be no buildings in the wetland area.
And will the community playground be open to the public?
And that's a good question, and we've gone back and forth, and ultimately, there are multiple requirements on the PUD for townhome site, and one of them is a recreation site, we're being loo, and in our first iteration, we actually proposed a pretty large community site that would have been given over to the town of Pittsboro, and I think through conversations with the staff, that was not a desirable result, so we backed it out. So it is private, we have to pay a recreation fee and loo for that. So I think it just becomes an issue on does the town want to take it over? We had no issue, didn't have no issue with necessarily making it a public park. If that's something that the town is interested in, we'd certainly do all the talking.
So if you're not going to dedicate the community playground area and park to the town, then you're going to be paying in lieu for 1.29 acres, as I recall seeing in the document.
I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but there's a calculation of per-unit area that we pay.
Does the board have any thought about whether they'd like to, the community playground dedicated to the town, or is this a thing that I think we need to be thinking about, and especially as to whether it would be open to the public? I remember Randy Boller, if you were still here, somewhat struggled over a playground very index of Chatham Forest, and whether that would be open to the public or not, and you might want to talk to Randy about that. Any other questions?
No, but I appreciate you bringing that up, and I guess I'd kind of like to hear your work from staff or department.
I'll have a coffee.
That'd be great. I'm curious to hear the thinking on that.
I have one additional question. So this, these others that you have provided, is this how you intend for the town nodes to look?
It is, yes, ma'am.
For sure.
Oh, and these are rendering, we're not to a spot where we're doing vertical design yet.
But that's what you intended.
It is.
But it's conceptual.
They are, yeah, conceptually. Conceptually, we want them to have a stone or brick facade that would look something similar to the mill, and that would carry into the mixed-use buildings in the future as well. Not only the mixed-use, but all the hardscape. We're in Carolina, we got, we have an abundance of plain, an abundance of brick, it doesn't make sense not to use it as building. And it keeps the vernacular of the area of the mill. So again, these are kind of storefronts or the future mixed-use, we would want everything to tie in as a cohesive project.
I think I have one other question. I think I heard you say that there was a maximum impermeable surface established for the commercial nodes.
Yes.
I missed it on the, is it on the, is it on the?
It is, it's on the cover sheet on the site.
On the cover sheet?
Yeah, 70% of the development area.
Okay, okay. So then that would translate also to the 58% that I think you've advertised as impermeable surface for the entire property includes?
Includes the commercial and the future residential.
And therefore, the pond is designed to accommodate that.
All of it.
Thank you.
I just have a comment, I think this project would help bring vitality to downtown and to Chatham Mills just by having people within walking distance of these commercial areas. I think my biggest concerns, too, are just addressing the traffic issues going into Chatham Mills, because that is an awkward space that becomes, it's not really a road, although it's known unusual for parking lots and roads to be interconnected. But I think if we address the traffic issues and the drainage issues, I think we're, it's kind of an interesting project.
Anything for?
I just want to express gratitude, Mr. Lovelace, for your presentation, for your responsiveness to the concerns that have been expressed this evening. I am, I find this kind of density attractive and intriguing, because I've become convinced on my two, modest two years of service in this board, that for downtown Pittsboro to remain economically vibrant, interesting, attractive, what, during a era when there will be new centers of economic gravity being built in Chatham Park and elsewhere, I think we're going to have to create more residential density to support that kind of commerce that we want in our downtown area, and perhaps at the south end of your project. I have some similar concerns about traffic, but I think that they're not, you, the overall number, 42, is not really what concerns me, it's how, I guess, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, it's how it flows elsewhere. And I, someone has shared with me that this part of town especially just really is lacking in east-west thoroughfares, and our whole town, really, much of our whole town is lacking in east-west thoroughfares, and so thinking about how folks get from the east side to the west side, having to go up and down various thoroughfares to do that, it's a lot to think about. And... And, um, the other item that I have concerns about, um, I'm not even sure it's concerns, I guess I'm curious, this will probably come at later site plan phase, um, and I'm somewhat reassured by your, your assurance that, that, that wet pond will contain all of that runoff, um, but during that clearing of the entire site, which you say will need to be done all at once rather than phases, uh, it seems that in recent experience, um, stormwater impacts during construction, uh, have been noticeable in certain parts of our ITJ hatchet. And, um, so I'm gonna be curious to learn more about that. It seems like something that you're sensitive to and attentive to, uh, so I'll, again, I'll be curious to learn more about that. Um, let's see if there was another. Uh, in all cases with residential development, I'm also eager to hear about diversity of price levels. Um, it's exclusively market-ready product. Um, I'm always curious to hear more about how we can, uh, address, uh, the already various, you know, problems Chatham County in Pittsburgh, of a lack of market-breaking affordable housing. Um, I'm gonna really look forward to the conversation about the tax amendment, um, because if, if that's something we've got to do to allow and encourage the kind of mixed-use residential over commercial, as you ascribe, um, golly, let's, let's get started on it.
I like that word, please.
So, um, thank you very much, Karen. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go out of public hearing? They'll move.
Sorry.
Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fioco. Those in favor, please, when you hear my saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We have two persons signed up for public expression period, which is next. That does have a three-minute limitation. Doug Emmons is the first person to sign up. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor Perry. My name's Doug Emmons, I live at 114 Auto Chase in Pittsburgh. Um, I have two things I just wanted to talk to briefly tonight, one of which is, um, Chatham Park, the other of which is Main Street Pittsburgh. Um, and in full disclosure, I also serve on the boards of the Chatham Economic Development Corporation and Main Street Pittsburgh. Um, specific to Chatham Park, I, I found tonight's discussion, um, interesting. I think there's some, some, uh, mirror in the special assessment district. Um, Chatham Park is a community that, and a, and a project that the Chatham Economic Development Corporation has supported for many years. Um, and actually put a public resolution forth in 2013, and in part, it was done because, you know, Chatham Park affords the opportunity for, um, a number of new jobs, economic development throughout the county, um, and an opportunity to help other businesses that are here already, um, including those that are downtown. So, we're very much in favor of that. We, we, and personally, having sat through the additional elements, um, reviews, feel that there's a lot of thought going into how this development has been planned and how it's coming together. So, we're very supportive of it seeing moving forward. Um, I think the special assessment district has some merit. I think one of the things that I'm a little concerned about in hearing the county's proposal this evening are some of the concerns or questions that are being asked that may, um, impinge or, or, um, already be covered in some of the additional elements. And from my perspective personally, I thought that that was a town jurisdiction per se. I, I think that's, not to say that it needs to be covered in collaboration with the county, but I'm just a little concerned that some of the requests might be coming in, um, at this point. I'm also a little concerned with respect to the school discussion, because the county put together a county comprehensive plan. Um, and when we reviewed that at the EDC last summer, um, and we had Jason Saul and the county planning entity there and the county commissioners, um, we brought up the fact that as a comprehensive plan, it didn't address the schools. And the rationale that we were given was that that was managed separately in the county. And, and my point in bringing that out is that even though it may be managed separately in the county, to do a comprehensive plan, you have to take that into account, because today, 37 cents on tax dollar goes to the schools. So, I think there's some things that need to get connected here. Um, and all in all, I believe that, um, from what I understand, CPI has worked their due diligence with the county schools and have reached some agreements there as well. So, I'm just a little concerned on that front. You know, as, as you move forward with this, and you look at judicial filings, and you look at what's being asked, that, that, um, those things be taken into consideration. On Main Street Pittsburgh, I just wanted to share real quickly that, um, I know there's a discussion topic coming up tonight, I hope that you folks will support it. Um, we had our mixer, um, a couple weeks ago. I was very pleased with the turnout, um, a number of you were there. I think it was an excellent, um, event, and, um, even had lunch today with one of the business owners, because they're excited about what we're trying to do downtown, and what they would like to see happen in conjunction with the town and Main Street. So, I think it's a great, um, step forward. I think there's many people here that have had a hand in that, you know, including Chatham Park and its support for itself. Um, I just want to say thank you for your support and, um, fellow board doing some more, um, economic development and, um, community development is what we want to do downtown. So, thank you for you.
Thank you, Doug.
Doug, thank you. I'd like to note that, like at its past base, you know, it was only a week ago, Doug. It just feels to come a long time ago.
The next speaker is Randy Boller.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners, it'll be short and sweet. Again, uh, we really were happy to see our Commissioners that were able to make this Main Street meeting. As the Chair of the Economic Vitality Committee, um, we thought it was a great turnout. It was the first time that we've ever had that many businesses and, I think, building owners in the same place, talking about a common vision for Pittsburgh, which is exciting. So, we hope the next time, uh, we do it, uh, we can not only get the full board there, but also kind of talk about some of the other designs and plans that Commissioner Fioco and others worked on to have people look at. And perhaps one day, we'll be able to do one of those in the new Town Hall, and it'll be right there in the heart of our, of our downtown. So I wanted to, uh, thank those that attended and hope that the next time everyone will be there, uh, if schedule permits, because I, I really think it was an event that, that spoke to a, a common vision for people with disparate backgrounds on what we can do with downtown Pittsburgh. Uh, I also wanted just to give a quick update. Some of you were at the county convention, uh, this weekend. I know I saw Mayor Perry there and Mr. Bonnetts. A couple of the items that I presented about, I think, four to six weeks ago from the Pittsburgh precinct passed the tech, passed the county convention, and they specifically had to do with overlay district, uh, the Main Street district, and a few other items that, uh, were on the list that we could, that you could go back and look at. But nobody questioned and pulled them out, and I think that you saw a support from the county, uh, those attending for the Main Street district and the idea of exploring an overlay. And they, they passed with, with very little, um, I, I didn't see any objection. And I also just want to hand this to the board. I saw on the, on your list tonight, you're gonna be discussing the contract, so at one time in the last, uh, six months, I, I think we met with, uh, I don't remember the board, maybe in the last year, but also recently with, uh, Town Manager Brian Grußbeck, and I just wanted to hand something that Cal Cunningham had from way zero. Uh, if our contract's coming up for negotiation, perhaps it's something to, to look at, and I asked him to send, uh, Mr. Grußbeck and the board more information. I emailed him before the meeting, and then I just had a couple other items that I thought I'll give to the mayor that I found on our records that you might make use of.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to commend, uh, Main Street, we're putting on such a nice event, and it was well-intended, there was just a good energy there, I think everybody was excited, and, uh, I enjoyed learning things about some of our business owners that I didn't know, and it was just really great, and I really appreciate you all putting that together.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the next item on the agenda are Commissioner updates. This is a time when we can share with the public the meetings that we have attended and the committees that we have, uh, committee meetings that we've gone to, which further the town's business. On the 15th of March, I attended, along with, um, Mayor Pamela Baldwin, the Affordable Housing Task Force, uh, meeting, which was very interesting. On the 16th, the next day, attended the legislative breakfast. Brian Grußbeck and I attended the legislative breakfast with our representative and, uh, Senate, State Senator, um, which was a, uh, in the, in many respects, a very discouraging meeting in that, in that, um, they talked about their inability to get many of their agenda items before the, um, before the body. On the 21st, I spoke to the League Women Voters, which is, of course, a nonpartisan organization about aspects of climate change and Chatham Park. And then, uh, continued, uh, having meetings with the manager and the town attorney on various, uh, items as they have come up through the, through the weeks. So this is, um, if, uh, Commissioners would like to share things that they have done with respect to meetings, I'd be glad to, um, hear them at this time.
Just have to say, I also attended the Main Street last meeting, that was very incredible.
Um, so I, I did attend the EDC meeting, and I think the big news for me, um, was that, uh, county has two certified mega sites. Don't correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, that is news to me, and I think that's great news, and I think EDC is doing a heck of a job marketing, uh, Chatham County. I know we're being very competitive with some bigger national, or international, um, endeavors, so, uh, I think we're getting close and perhaps a little bit. Um, PBA in downtown, first Sundays beginning again this Sunday, April 1st, so, hopefully we'll have good weather. And yes, the meet, the Greek mixer was, I thought, a pretty successful event, and saw a lot of people, had a lot of great conversations, one of which was a, um, property owner downtown who is eager to try to get residential above commercial in downtown Pittsburgh, and, um, I had a meeting with that individual, uh, April 11th, with his architect to explore these ideas, and so that I can better understand what the problems have been from a code perspective. He said he'd tried this before and before to buy our code, so, I think, um, our UDO speaks of this type of development, and I think the tax amendment is wholly appropriate, um, if in fact we agree with that idea, no, no need to wait for the UDO. So, um, I'll report back.
Um, I attended the first, uh, meeting of the Human Relations Task Force meeting, and that was really interesting. It's a really, um, well-rounded group of people from a lot of different areas of, um, issues and different areas of the county. We talked about, um, what the most pressing issues were, and, um, who these should be involved, and what, what is, what is effective policy that would look like. So it was really a great meeting, and everybody seemed very, um, excited about getting to work, so.
Uh, climate change, County, Chatham County Climate Change Advisory Committee will be meeting April 12th, and, uh, a gentleman by the name of Aaron Fleischer will be presenting on health and climate change. That's all I have to report there.
The next, the next meeting of the Affordable Housing Task Force, that is supposed, the Affordable Housing Task Force is supposed to meet again on Thursday here at 7:00. And it is a public meeting.
Next on the agenda is old business, and we have an update on ABC matters, um, with Jim Knopf.
Yeah.
Before you present, Jim, I think there's a motion to take a break here, so.
Absolutely.
Moved by Jay Farrell, seconded by Pamela Baldwin, as the therapy's saying.
Commercial and our residential routes for us, uh, in conjunction with our local operating facilities, because the technologies are really great, uh, I'd probably say they're about 85% accurate, and at some point, you need the human touch on, hey, I can't go to this customer until 7:00, can't get this customer until a certain point in time, and computer-type systems, don't take all that into consideration. Um, so, uh, it's basically what we use, it's called DriveCam, it's actually just came out as a safety product to coach drivers on their driving behaviors, but it also has GPS functionality, and so it allows us to see where our trucks are at all times, that allows us to see what path they follow versus the design route we've created. And then we, internally, we use, um, Esri software and RouteSmart, um, is what our GIS team uses to help us design those routes and, and tweak them for a plan of time, so sometimes it may be a, a complete reroute of all of our residential work at a particular location, otherwise it's, you know, adjusting because population growth difficulties, um, but it's, it's kind of those teams work together, the technology, to help us fly forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greatly appreciate the opportunity.
Do you have a question?
Well, I think we're gonna follow up with some more information, uh, to get back to you, that's inappropriate to leave us, you know, with formal issues at that point we're on.
Great, perfect.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the old business list is Chatham Park. Additional elements for public art and transit, Joe, Joe, give our guides through these.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Number four. Tonight, we're gonna go through public art and transit elements, um, just as a sort of a follow-up to what we did, what you all did at the last meeting, which, in, in so many words, you, you approve the transit with, with the changes that you and the applicant agreed to at the meeting. There just needs to be a ratification of that, of that approval, and that's where the resolution is in the packet, um, and for you all to say yes, that they did actually make those changes, um, so that was provided to you. And then likewise with public art, there was some conversation between you all and the applicant to, um, what's to suggest the changes, applicant has provided those, and a resolution for your consideration is in the document as well. Um, applicant, of course, is here, can answer any questions, and can continue that conversation that you all had at the last meeting. We wrap these two up tonight, I'll just kind of give you a little update on what's going on with stormwater. Uh, staff and, uh, Chatham Park have met three times with hydrostructures over the last several weeks, um, as recently as last, um, I think it was last Wednesday, we have meetings with hydrostructures in the state and Chatham Park to sort of get hydrostructures, uh, up to speed on what they were, um, reviewing and some questions that they had, so we've gotten those answers, so I'm hopeful that in the next few weeks, few weeks, couple weeks, we're gonna have something for you all to consider on stormwater. Likewise, Roger, our UDO consultant, has gotten us a, a paper on the tree protection element and how his draft and the UDO's, uh, Chatham Park's draft, uh, got that today, and we'll review that before I send that forward to you all to look at. If we, if you wrap up public art and transit, that will leave us with, uh, public facilities, affordable housing, of course, stormwater and tree protection of the remaining elements that we'll have, we'll have four that we'll have to take care of, um, over the next several , uh, weeks. Looking further into the future, once we get done with most likely stormwater, tree protection, and public facilities, we might consider moving on to the small-area plan at some point in time and leaving affordable housing to the town. at some point in time and leaving affordable housing to the task force and letting them do their work. Outside of how we are going to address affordable housing, I think it would be appropriate for you all to move forward with the small area plan that has been presented to you all. I think the applicant is going to have some edits to that original draft that they're going to propose to you all as well. But that's looking several weeks, several meetings into the future, but that's my plan. And when we get to a small area plan, and this is for you all to think about, is coming up with a path of how we review it, if it's going to have a citizen component and kind of agreeing to some dates and some public dates, if you want to have public meetings on it. Feedback on that, when we get to that point, will be very helpful because I'd like to kind of get a path of review for the small area plan wrapped up when we start that process. And then of course, once that's all completed and we've gotten the small area plan and the elements, we still do have the development agreement that you all received back in December a year ago. So there's things in the pipeline that we have to take care of and tonight you all may consider public art and transit one more time and that'll be part of the process. And I'll turn it over to you all and to the applicant.
Good evening, Chuck.
Good evening. It's good to see you guys. You don't think that was sincere? I sent you guys copies of this about a week and a half ago. Didn't get any comments back other than one from Mr. Fiocco on transit, but that was the one that had already been voted on, so I don't know how to, we can decide how to deal with that. So I could go over the language we changed if you want to or just if you've already reviewed it, entertain any questions you have.
How do we start with transit then? I wanted to know if Michael had drafted these changes.
No.
Is that your language?
No, it is not, but it is acceptable.
It does the job.
Yeah. Although I have one question about this statement. It says, greenways and trails intersect road and trail roads within Chatham Park. Greatly separate crossings. Shouldn't we be saying great separated crossings?
Well, the more familiar term to me is great separated, but when I saw that, you know, I think it's.
I didn't intend, so just a cleanup. But I did have one comment when I read this and it has to do with the transportation impact analysis. I understand what the intent of the statement is and I don't think it means to exclude town or NCDOT approval. And the last sentence of section two says, for purposes of development plan approval, construction or installation of public infrastructure improvements recommended in the TIA will be deemed to adequately address the traffic impact of the proposed development. Clearly, the TIA will need to be approved. It's not that a developer submits a TIA and says, that's it, that's the thing. I know what the intent is to say, this agreement adequately mitigates the impact of this development. And it's not to say that sometime later that additional improvements need to be made. If the TIA, everybody looked at it and said, yep, this is what it's going to take. That turn lane is going to do it, that traffic signal is going to do it. But I think the language, because it doesn't say that town approval or NCDOT approval will be applied. I think it should, just to be crystal clear.
Well, just to simplify this, I'll say that I've taken your wording that you suggested and we're okay with it. And the wording that you, you want me to read or do you want?
I'll be happy to do it. So it simply says, for purposes of development plan approval, traffic impacted, for purposes of development plan approval, construction or installation of public infrastructure improvements recommended in the TIA and approved by the town and/or NCDOT.
And that's the language that was added, and approved by the town and/or NCDOT?
That's it. And approved by the town and/or NCDOT. I think it's helpful to have clarity. They don't want us to go 10 years down the road. But always submit a TIA and solve this too. So, you know, I know I've probably got it as four clarification, but I think it's going to be helpful.
Anything else?
Can the only other language, Mayor, your suggested language, in section four, the first paragraph, we added that. I think that was your exact wording, but that was for you to.
With consideration being given connectivity and encouragement.
Right, that was your suggested language. At Mr. Bonnet's.
So those changes, any other, one that Michael just words missed, Chuck, is there a motion?
No, no group.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by John Bonnet. Those, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Now, that should be for the resolution, should it not, approving the element. Maybe then we ought to.
The date change.
Pardon?
There's going to be a date change on that because we just may change this to a date. No, that's.
Well, could we approve the resolution with the date change? Is there a motion to approve the resolution concerning additional elements of Chatham Park Plan Development District Master Plan Transit with the exception of a date change? Move by Pamela Baldwin.
Second.
Seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Excellent. And now transit. Now with respect to art, public art elements, the changes were, as I recall, to objective number two.
They're on page two. There's three amendments. They're all on page two.
I'll take this one. I think that it actually reflects what I wanted to say just from my understanding of the language that clarifies what Michael said was. Subject to their availability to improve the CPAA will include two persons from the art community in Chatham County and impressive local artists. My intent was it could be local artists as well as members of like the Art Guild, the Chatham Arts Council, or the Art Institute, or it could be from, you know, board members from those organizations as well. I'm not sure how the board deputy.
Well, so the art community does that when it put in what's local artists, that's where you think it got away from including members of the art guild and things like that. So if you just took out those, took out what's in print.
And then number eight, of course, to encourage owners of properties to be held and let local artists produce by literature, local arts produced by Chatham Arts Guild. My intent was, that's just one of the arts organizations that would be the Chatham Arts Council, Chatham Art Guild, Art Institute, so local arts organizations.
So say local art organizations and that would cover.
I think so. Because 20 years from now, who knows? I think it needs to be more general because those organizations might not be around 20 years from now. But they will, you never know. And also that would give some of the owners a chance to often submit, because we have several outstanding arts organizations that actually perform different functions. So that would satisfy me on that.
Okay. We're okay on both of those. And I think number, objective three, number two is more Mr. Fiocco's.
So would there be a motion to approve the resolution for public art elements with the changes just discussed and the change in the date on which we, Chuck didn't get the date for change. Move by Beth Wilson, fully seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed.
Can I bring up one more thing? Related to the elements. I think Mr. Jones did a good job of explaining where we are on the two he mentioned. And given the conversations earlier tonight, we would like to see if it's possible to put public facilities on the agenda next meeting. I just want to make one comment that really is a request based on what we heard. Just based on our meetings with the school staff and the action taken by the school board related to the language that we have in the public facilities element regarding schools. We know that they were showing up at the initial elements committee meetings and different things like that when we were not in agreement. As soon as we're in agreement, this was done back in November, they voted on it in November. Then that's why Mr. Blythe hasn't been here because he knows, he's seen this, he's got a copy of it, he knows that's where they stand. So what I need from you is what are you looking, since this is what they requested, what are you looking for to say, I think is your comment, Mr. Fiocco, you want some sort of closure or something? Are you for a letter from Mr. Blythe or what are you looking for that we need to do something?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I need to understand that agreement. And I don't know.
Understanding the agreements, I thought the question was whether they were satisfied with the wording of what we agreed to. And they are, but you don't necessarily know that other than knowing that we've.
I don't know what you're bringing up. I think it would be a good idea, I think it would be a good idea for Mr. Grisbeck to send that document either to Mr. Blythe or to the school board, to Lieutenant Arnold Bahum, and make sure that that is still their understanding.
That has hurt. They've sent the latest draft. I'm meeting with Chris tomorrow. On other issues, but land needs issues, future land. But I can talk to him tomorrow. But my understanding is that they have seen it multiple times, the latest draft, and nothing has changed in their minds. So I'm not sure where the communication breakdown from the school system to the county is, because that's where it seems to be, is that the county is not hearing the school board say, we're okay with this. Yeah, and I don't know how we make that happen, but Chatham Park has provided language to satisfy the school and has high opinion, told, but yes, we're good. I can get some opinions, Chuck, because we have it. I think y'all may have already had letters that says, yes, we're.
Well, we've got a variety of.
And there's been board, there's been board action. We can go to their minutes and their purpose on those. So, yeah, what Chuck is asking, what do you all need to see that the county is okay with that?
There's a document that says they're okay with that.
The commissioners or the school board?
I think, well, actually, you need it really from both, the commissioners and Mrs. Paschal is not understanding that the school board has agreed to that. There's a little problem somewhere in there. So basically, we want to know that the school board has talked to Mrs. Paschal because she really does oversee all of that. So there's some problems there somewhere and evidently the school board, somebody has told her, she has a problem.
Yeah, that's strange.
You know, and I don't want this to happen to Dr. Jordan at all. I don't, because I talked to the school, I don't have a problem talking with him and asking what's going on.
Yeah, I'll keep meeting with Chris tomorrow.
Our meeting will be Thursday as well, so.
Somebody is, it's sometimes a disconnect somewhere. So I think if we can get that resolved, I think that.
And are you asking that for both orgs blessed this language?
Not necessarily blessed it, but I want to know that they are, that they understand.
Okay. I don't know, Chuck.
Not necessarily that they.
You can say to the county commissioners, if they've seen it or blessed it, because I think you'd be going down the path of the school board being satisfied. And if we've got now a requirement of the county commissioner, see it or bless it or what.
I didn't say a requirement. I want to know that they understand.
Well, how do they understand if they don't go and present it and make sure that.
Well, they had to be in it.
We'll talk to Mr. Blythe about that. I know there's not necessarily the greatest communication between the two groups because from our, I mean, we've heard the county manager say, the school board does this, we don't get involved in this. I mean, we were talking about trying to get an EMS site on a, you know, unused portion of a school site. Well, no, we don't, we don't deal with school sites. So in some ways, you know, there's some turf there that they both protect. But I get your point, just, I mean, we'll make sure they're aware of it and we'll talk to Mr. Blythe about if there is any sort of communication between the two. But I don't know that we can force anything. You might be able to do that.
No, you don't have to force anything. I just want them, if your county manager is sitting here and saying that there's something that she, somebody may have said that to her, I don't know. So you don't necessarily have to.
You mean there are things said around here that aren't necessarily completely understood? We've constantly said we're giving school sites and after three weeks from getting passed that, it's kind of, well, they're not giving school sites. I mean, you probably heard it recently from somewhere. That's.
Well, I know better than that because I was one of those who initiated those conversations between you all and the school board. So, but I just want everything to be, you don't have to.
Well, you know, we're trying to move this along, so we'll do whatever we can to clarify that confusion.
Because they could have told her something.
Sure.
Thank you.
Public facilities will be the next element that we'll take a look at and I think this afternoon we talked about that not being on the schedule next time, did we not? Did we have a draft of that most recently?
Back in November, you got it and we talked about it at your December meeting, but I've got copies here if you would like them.
Yeah, let's see if we can take them. Because amazing things happen to take our line.
Four months. Christmas reading for you.
Oh, yeah. Very. All right, so that'll be on April 9th, I think, agenda.
And if you, we will send that electronically, so if you would, I don't know if Mr. Bonnet some, Mr. Forza.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. On our new business, very briefly, I simply wanted to put forward some initiatives that I thought that we needed to be making a first step. You know, we talked last time about climate change being a monumentally large problem, but that it gets solved only by small steps. And I wanted to talk about three small steps tonight. And one of them is the possibility of establishing an idling policy with respect to town vehicles, notably the police and the public works department. So I don't personally know, and I have not spoken to Percy or its members of the police department, to know whether there is a safety element involved in your leaving your patrol car on idle. There isn't, from my understanding, the aspect of car maintenance increases exponentially. There isn't, from my understanding, the aspect of car maintenance increases exponentially if you idle your car for a very long time. And obviously, we have a tremendous fleet of cars that have gone through a lot of idling, but not necessarily a lot of mile driving. So if it were to be possible to have an idling policy that was not related to safety or response time or whatever, I would be interested in knowing how it is that we could craft that. And so is it possible that such a policy could be researched or looked into by our town manager and with respect to both those, the town vehicles and the police? Is the board, okay, this is Brian reporting back on it.
Thank you.
I think I shared with you the idea that when I went to the food line and tried to speak to the manager about some kind of a way for us to join together to replace the plastics that are both in the bagging of the groceries and in the wrapping of the produce, I did not make a tremendous amount of progress, admittedly. However, there was put forward an idea about a public-private partnership. And I know that the bags that we produced for, I guess it was for our October street clothes, street fair day, didn't we have some really attractive cloth bags that were produced for the police department so that they could put things in or people could put things in the shopping? And as I recall, those were very, very inexpensive. And maybe we would hold up for a tremendously long time for the holding of groceries, heavy groceries, but at least it would be a start. Because I think the biggest problem with getting people to use the useful bags at the grocery store is getting them to bring them, getting them not to forget them in the car or forget them on the back porch or at home or whatever. And the manager of the food line softened just a little bit when we talked about a public-private partnership. Maybe put food line on one side and Town Pittsburgh on the other and encourage people and have them for free. Yes, food line has some, but they want to sell them to you. Would it be possible to investigate a partnership like that with both the food line and the Piggly Wiggly to offer bags that would be given away, maybe even have a stack of them on hand inside the store so that people did forget their bags, that they would have something free to put them in? There are lots of techniques for doing that. And there's also a technique for the grocery store giving you a five cent credit for bringing a reused, reused bag. I noticed when I went to Sunset Beach last week that the food line there allowed a five cent credit for every reused bag that you brought in to put your groceries in. Five cents is not very much, but it's the recognition of the, of just reducing the plastic and our waste industries people are gone now, but there was a great article in the News and Observer that I believe I sent to you all about plastics and recycling. And right now, we have so much plastic waiting to go over to China, and China's not wanting to take our plastic anymore because the market is so low, that anything that we continue to produce plastic, I think is very important. So do we, how can we go about thinking in terms of creating such a public-private partnership with the pressure?
Well, in the simplest vision, immediately, which is in my mind, a volunteer looks into pricing, has culinary discussions with all the groceries that might participate, and I would hope the shadow marketers might be included as well, discussions of how much they might be willing to sponsor, and then it would be a budget matter for us. And it occurs to me also that this is something that in other cities, kind of organization that might handle this would be a group called Keep America Beautiful.
Yes.
And I don't think, but Keep America Beautiful chapter two.
Actually, I attended a meeting out at the County Landville site, and they're putting together a chapter of Keep America Beautiful.
Fantastic.
And it's a, it's an incredible organization. It has a very large entry fee, I think it's close to $4,000 for our size town. But once you enter, then you get all kinds of, everything after that is free, and everything after that is provided to you for events that are trash pickups or, or, you know, funds, recycling kinds of-
I remember that.
So I'll volunteer to talk to, I believe it's Stephanie out there at the county recycling center.
Sounds like it would be a real windfall in the direction of where you're going, Mary.
Okay. And we'll see if they could help us to put something together.
And we might speak to some local nonprofits about can you lend for that $4,000 or whatever it is.
Okay. So the idling policy, Brian will take care of and report back to us, and I'll report back on the plastic shopping bag. And the last thing, of course, is just that simple handout. It's on our website and I know that making friends and influencing people is something that we all enjoy doing and, you know, just hand them out to all your friends and neighbors that the-
List of-
List of recycle stuff. You put it on there.
I put it on there, yeah. I had before and I'll do it again.
Okay.
I'll put everything on there that's about how to, what not to do.
Oh, great. May I say to that, and I'll try and also that to the extent that we're able to move in the direction of establishing a Keep America Beautiful chapter, their first project may be this bag effort. Perhaps the second project would be investigation based into education and encouragement and even equipment for backdoor contest. That'd be something I'd very much love to participate in support.
I wonder if the Bunnies Foundation might help with something like that.
Yep. And that's one of the pleasures that I think that some individuals come by. And so much about what you learn regarding cost and that maybe.
Excellent. The next thing on the agenda for new businesses is the contract between Main Street and Johnson's. Brian Grisbeck.
Thank you again. You have the memo and you have a draft contract. As you're aware, Main Street has been very active in promoting and supporting the downtown. There's a number of folks that are directly engaged with it, and as a result, they are moving at a very fast pace. And I think that's it, from the town's perspective, that's a, lack of a better way to put it, a good problem to have in a way, in that they want to commit resources to supporting downtown. So to that end, we've been talking, town staff and Main Street folks have been talking for a while about a process that will better enable Main Street to receive funding and set budgets and then disperse funding and really further continue and strengthen the Main Street mission. And so what you have this evening is this addition of a contract that I think in the past we've called it an MOU that establishes, here it's called, they're called obligations for each of the town and for Main Street. And essentially, what we're looking to do and what Main Street is looking to do is to start, first of all, with dispersal of, I think it's around 20,000 or so that we have budgeted towards Main Street for this year, as discussed in the last budgeting process, releasing that. Then in turn, Main Street would spend that money and then moving forward, Main Street would be submitting an annual budget much like they did last year. And that meeting, continually meeting with town staff over the course of the next fiscal year, providing, providing monthly reports to town staff and then also providing, providing regularly scheduled quarterly meetings to the town board on how the money is being spent, how, you know, what the activities are the preceding quarter. And so I think, I think what we've, what we've done is, I think, worked hard again to establish a little bit more form, a little bit more process to this and really try to put Main Street, the Main Street organization, in a better and stronger operational position, while at the same time, try to protect the town in terms of how public money is spent. Because I think that's what it, that's, you know, that's kind of the left blanket in all of this is that public money has to be spent for public purpose. And so to those ends, we have to make sure that we have some controls in place to ensure that continues to happen. And this disagreement kind of represents that first step of that. Now, Mr. Masnick has reviewed it, I think he has a couple of, probably has a couple of comments that he wants to make. So, you know, I would just kind of leave you with that overall description of where we're at, what we're trying to do with this, and then really kind of seeking your feedback. And then ultimately, once we're, once we're comfortable, we'd be looking to, I'd be seeking a recommendation to execute the contract much later.
My concerns are at the form of the contract. I don't think it adequately protects the town in terms of issues that might come up. And it needs a pre-audited certification by the finance director as well. And, you know, when you all talk about Main Street, that's one thing. What this is a contract is, is with Main Street Pittsburgh Incorporated, which is a separate non-profit corporation that is completely apparently outside your control once you give them money. And this particular draft provides no relationship between the town and the corporation that would be, I don't think, adequate to protect the town's energy.
Well, let me mention or comment on that. Main Street program, we are registered with the state of North Carolina. We are working underneath the bylaws of that organization. Many of these organizations are not town staffed. They are volunteer staffed by citizens who are interested enough in pushing forward the four-point program of the Main Street program. The Main Street folks have been talking with Brian for five months about this MOU. And it's got monthly budgetary reconciliations, it's got quarterly presentations to this board. And I would ask, when you voted, all of us voted on the budget last year, did we honestly think that we were not providing the funds to the Main Street organization so that they could accomplish their mission? That's all this is doing, is it's formalizing how the money is dispersed. Because right now, I can tell you that there's been close to $30,000 spent by the Main Street program on the various activities, and all $30,000 has been fronted by the members of the Main Street organization, only to be reimbursed maybe two months later. That's what we're operating under right now. And what we're trying to do is formalize an agreement so that this draft talks about 50% disbursement and then another 50% disbursement. There are plenty of checks and balances, but the way we're doing it right now is making it a hardship on some of the board members, honestly. We've got a 501(c)(3), that means we get to raise money from the private sector in exchange for a tax break. We've only just received that. We expect the revenues from that to be substantial. This is a very reputable, reputable group of people in an organization, and I just can't express strongly enough how much I think is appropriate that we have this agreement. We have a similar arrangement with the EDC where we budget money, allocate money, and it goes to the EDC. We don't ask the EDC to spend the money and ask for reimbursement. So we've all decided at our last retreat that downtown is one of our top three priorities. We've got a group of people who are dedicating their time in pursuit of that endeavor, and to that we are providing funding to them. It's simply a way to provide the funding so that they have the ability to be more nimble, more creative. It's not part of launch, we will set the budget number when we set a budget. So that's what I'd say. And I would encourage all of us to pass this motion.
Fantastic. What language would you need to go from?
Pre-audited certification for one, I think the law requires that. Two, I think any nonprofit that you do business with ought to provide you with a copy of their charter, their bylaws, the 501(c)(3), a letter from the IRS, copies of the tax returns, audits. None of that is spelled out in here, and maybe it is implicit, maybe that's been discussed, there's no requirement that they do that. And, you know, if they're going to be out doing activities on behalf of the town, you need to be identified by the organization. Somebody needs to be providing insurance to cover what might happen in some event that they're sponsoring, if the town is in any way implicated by that. I think you all need to have just some kind of representation on the board. And I don't know what you do or you don't.
We do.
There is nothing that says it in here that the town shall have a representative on this board of directors.
I think our, I think the bylaws do.
But the town has never seen a bylaw.
Yeah.
Or approved for that. Not that you need to approve them, but you've at least never seen them. So how do you know what's in?
I'm on the board.
I get that. The other fundamental thing is really, there's no, there's no discussion in here other than a mission for the corporation. What exactly is the money for? If that was addressed in the budget, then there is a, should be an attachment to this that says that they shall do this, that, or the other, whatever's in the budget. But this, all this is, is that they will do the mission.
And the budget, there's a required-
There's language in there about the budget.
And-
I'm talking about your budget, not the town's budget.
The Main Street, the Main Street program provided a budget.
It's not attached.
It's, well, it could be.
It could be, should be.
You're talking about this year's budget?
Yeah, should be.
And we could attach the 501(c)(3), we could attach that. I mean, let's add that language.
I mean, yeah, it's just, it's kind of frustrating that we've been working on this since November, and this is the first time we're hearing these types of-
First time I saw it, third time. And we are fully insured as well.
We have all the, we have all the done.
Everything he's asked before, we have it, we can attach it.
That's great. Sounds like it could be worked into place for perhaps the next meeting.
I hope so.
And then adding the language about the tax under representation.
Everything I've heard, sounds great, sounds agreeable, sounds like good, important stuff, wonderful, excellent work. We want to continue to support it, and we also want to make sure we're dotting all the i's and cross the t's.
I have one question. So maybe this is for Mr. Grisbeck, for Mr. Masnick. Is this going to open any other nonprofits for wanting to have a budget line on our-
You know, if we get the request, you would, you would just simply review that request on its own merits. I mean, you can, you can either, you can either agree or disagree with that type of request. And I think this is so unique, but, you know, it's an established, it's an established model that's used not only in North Carolina, but the rest of the country too. So I don't, I don't think you have, I don't, you know, spending public money on a private purchase, it doesn't really enter into any other, any other type of arrangement like with a nonprofit or anything like that. You just don't see those types of contracts for the organization. That doesn't mean that people can't try to add- That doesn't mean that people can't try to ask, but it's a pretty easy question to answer. I mean, unless we have a real reason to spend the public money and we can make a case that it goes for a public purpose, then I think we can do that.
But you have had requests in the past from nonprofits and you will continue to get requests. The county has an extensive program that they utilize the United Way to sort of screen people. And they consider it a public purpose if it provides for public service type activities. And you could very easily have something. If there's a community group that wants to take on the mayor's charge of staffing the grocery stores with food bags, then that would, you may be able to justify that as a public purpose and be able to authorize some kind of money for that organization to be able to do that kind of activity. Or you could assign some town staff members to do it, which is the other alternative. But you're, essentially, you're hiring Main Street Pittsburgh Inc. to do a function that you have been doing for the last five years in-house by the town. And so you're asking them to do something that you could have done for yourself.
I kind of agree with Mr. Messick on that. If we had all this information, it would probably be very helpful in doing this. My concern is taxpayers' money, that's what we're here for. That's what we have to work with and that's what we're here to budget.
I think this would be considered like an investment, you know, it's like...
It is an investment, but you still have to consider it's taxpayers' money. That's first and foremost. And believe me, I had a great time Monday night. Main Street's fine. My question is, who paid for that Monday night? Did that come out of Main Street?
Coastal Fish did. They paid everything.
Well, was there some, you know?
We have three people that would like to speak on this issue.
And apparently, Main Street paid half of that and said Coastal Fish picked it up.
We have three people that would like to speak on this topic. Do we want to hear from them? There are three people who would like to speak. Do you wish to hear from them?
I would.
All right. So Randy and first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Randy, can you come up?
Maria, you're going to be next.
You can all just come up so we can do this. I just wanted to address a couple of things that were wisely brought up by Mr. Messick. We do have all the documents. Michael attends these meetings religiously, as well as County Representative Mike Dasher. I'm not sure if our bylaws stipulate that there is a seat for both, but it has been agreed upon by the board. Maybe it is in the bylaws. But that's the method that the EDC uses where you have ex officio members that are the mayor. I used to have that seat as well as the county commissioner. So I would see no problem with having a permanent slotted seat for someone from the county and the town. We took the initiative to go to the county because we thought with all the buildings they have down there, they should be involved and have some of the meetings. And it's worked very well to have that connection. So I don't see any issue or problem doing it. And I've seen, my wife Leslie's not here, but she's the secretary and she has all these documents, so there'd be no issue in providing this to the board for next meeting.
So how would the insurance issue be addressed? That would be a question.
They'll come up and address it because we do have insurance. They could address it. And I'd also like to say that the county does have a process that they've done at least since 2010, as Paula said, that funds the United Way, which then distributes it out to various members of the county. But they also fund directly nonprofits as they have with FDRRC, as they have with Affordable Housing or Habitat, and they have with EDC. The Chatham County EDC is a nonprofit that gets a good chunk of its funding from the county to do a public purpose, which is no different than Main Street Pittsburgh. Our charter is just focused on the Main Street district.
Right, right. There is a difference. Economic development is, I don't think that's what you're doing. If you are, then there's more hoops that have to be gone through to do that. I thought you were doing downtown revitalization, and I'm not sure what the difference is. But downtown revitalization, that require public hearing. Economic development does. So, you know.
Well, I would say that advocating for revitalization at some point then connects to, there is going to be some form of economic development, which would probably, which is what I would consider the county building new buildings. I mean, we just said that we endorse the plan, you know.
I'm saying is, before the town can spend money for economic development, it has to have a public hearing. It has not had a public hearing on this particular issue. If it's downtown revitalization, it may be a different story. You don't need a public hearing.
Well, I'm the chair of the economic development, I mean, the economic revitalization committee. So I've always thought that my job was to provide information, help in revitalizing downtown. That's what it says in our charter. That's what we do. But I do understand the distinction, Paula, you're making.
And just a comment about, again, to kind of elaborate on the public money and the private purpose. The counties typically will provide that type of money for health and human services. Municipalities and rural places governments cannot. It isn't a matter of credit. And I think that's just in county responsibilities for mental health and some of those programmatic areas that they can play a role, but cities are not.
Right. Yeah, I'm not here to say that we should or shouldn't. I'm just pointing out the example that some of these others are 501(c)(3)'s and they get funding. But Brian's right, there's a particular reason for why they fund those and municipalities don't. But it's not unusual to have a Main Street committee have investment by municipality.
Right.
Exactly.
And I remember in the early meetings of the Main Street program, they talked about economic vitality. It was really around, like, building vacant buildings and making sure that you don't have vacant buildings downtown. So that's...
Yes, that's a part of it.
It's kind of related to, it's not just economic, it's specific to me, so it's different. So if they don't want to...
Maria? Can I let Doug help draft the agreement?
I just wanted to say, I think Randy's touched on some of this already, that in the last five or six months, Brian and myself and Jim Nass, who was here earlier, had met several times, and then most recently, our new treasurer, Steve Schurz, with Brian and Heather. And I think our intent in drafting this was effectively to address the issue that Michael talked to. But we were also trying to ensure that we provide enough safeguards in it to enable the town to feel comfortable. I understand the concern that you're handing public funds over to a nonprofit. But the nature of what we do as a nonprofit is focused exclusively on Pittsburgh and exclusively within the district that you folks have approved as a map. And its purpose is based on the charter of a Main Street organization, which covers those four pillars that have been described previously in our presentations as well as in some of our public meetings.
Is that set forth in the bylaws?
It is.
Okay. It's not in the charter?
And we're happy to provide a copy of the bylaws. I think things that I jotted down that you asked for were a copy of the bylaws, Pittsburgh Board Representation by Town Commissioner, we have that, Michael's representation, tax returns. We've only done, I don't even know if we've done a tax return yet. I don't think we've been in existence long enough to do that.
Apparently, you're talking about a long-term arrangement here. So in the future, you will give us tax returns. You will also have an audit and things of that sort. If you're going to solicit other funds, do you want to get a license from the state?
We have it. So, you know, and we've provided a copy of what we proposed for the budget that went in and was approved last June or something by the town. And I'll let Maria talk in terms of indemnification, in terms of events, because for, what, three or four years, we operated as just a volunteer group, providing support for things like Summerfest and First Sundays and other events. All we did was formalize the organization to ensure that we could solicit other sources of funding so that we weren't totally reliant on the town. And in doing that, we thought we had the green light when we got approval for the budget to go do that. But unfortunately, the funding didn't come over. It was, submit it and then submit your invoices, which we did. But that kind of put a burden on the people that are volunteers trying to make this work. And so what we're trying to do is eliminate that burden, make it easier for us to actually execute what we said we want to go do. And, you know, hopefully, with what we've put together as an agreement, provide enough safeguards, you feel comfortable with it. But certainly, the things you've requested, we can provide.
I'm curious about the facade grant. If you can get the money for that, what standards are you going to use to issue those grants?
The same standards that are being used by...
We have to use the same standards. We have, it'll be the same with that contract. And there's also standards that the, and the Main Street program, they direct that. We have to follow their guidelines. It's not just economic...
Why do you have to follow that?
To be in the program.
And how are you in the program?
We joined the program in 2011. That was...
That was before you were incorporated. How did you join the program before you were incorporated?
The town joined as a Main Street, small-town Main...
The town is a member.
Right.
Main Street Pittsburgh Inc. may not be a member. There is a difference. You're asking us to contract with you, the corporation. So I don't understand how you can be a member if it was the town that was a member since 2011.
Well, and...
Well, we are a nonprofit working on behalf of the town.
If you get the contract, you are, yes.
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
Right.
And...
So then the town could expect you will follow the Main Street program criteria and guidelines for facade grants.
Absolutely.
And make you do it that way, not some other way.
Correct.
Okay.
And we would have no reason to do it any other way. If we did something that would jeopardize the town, we also jeopardize ourselves. And then we, the community loses faith in us. The whole point of the program is to provide a place where we can work as a community. It's a partnership, it's a partnership between the group itself, the 501(c)(3), the businesses, the property owners, the citizens, the town. Our intention isn't for the eleven people on the board to run this program. And I know, you've already approved funding and we've provided the budget, we've showed you our intentions on how we're going to spend that money. That doesn't change. And there are some things, something was mentioned about, well, you're paying them to do things you're doing already. Well, I beg to differ because we've done things that the town hasn't done in an effort to help the town. We've educated, and this was before we were incorporated. We've educated on the vision that the town adopted in 2014. We've educated the town on the Circle Project. We've formed meetings with business owners and property owners around that Circle Project so that they could understand what was going on, so that we could gather input, so that we could bring that input back to the town. And I know you received so many questions and complaints about that project. We helped provide those meetings to help, because there's so many misunderstandings. You know, people hear these projects are coming, they hear change is coming, they get fearful, they come up with their own thoughts and ideas on what's happening, and then gossip starts to go around the town. And that doesn't help. On our update, I showed you the new banners that we're putting up, where we organize meetings with town staff, that being Fred and his rain garden project. So again, those directly affected by it could understand what was happening adjacent to their properties and that they could have input. A lot of what we do is education right now, that's far. But we're starting also to do some more tangible things. So I really disagree that we're just replicating what you're already doing.
And honestly, to that statement, Paul, that the town's been doing it since 2011. So we've been allocating town resources and town budget for staff to be doing that. Well, I don't think staff has really got the time right now to be doing this type of work. I think staff's pretty well hooked up. And so there's a group of volunteers who are here, working pretty darn tirelessly, pretty creatively, and I think at a pretty cost-effective rate.
It is, we have, because we're so busy.
Well, there you go. I mean, I don't think we've got time for Joe Johnson to be going around, you know, soliciting.
That's not really the issue. The issue is that the town has been doing it and you're going to ask these other folks to do it. So you should be able to expect that they will honor the same criteria that you would be doing it yourself.
Correct. But I thought you started to get into the realm of justifying this organization and I want to defend this organization.
I have anything wrong with the organization, but it's a brand-new organization. If you're going to be giving them your money, then you need to have the right to expect that they will spend it the way you would have spent it or you would have wanted to spend it.
And I 100% agree. And I apologize that the application was lacking in its documentation. But, you know, all those issues we can address, then we can address them right away.
Okay. I think the hour is late. And I think that Paul has some good ideas. The indemnification clause, I think, is exceedingly important. John Bonnet, you have some suggestions to make.
No. I just was going to read that bullets, but I don't even need to do that. Let's just get Mr. Messick and the organization connected in.
Yeah. Let's get you all together and get a contract and we'll look at the neighboring.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to add, I'm going to send you guys this presentation from North Carolina for 2012 that we got on Main Street. And Liz Parham and those that came from the state recommended that the town help form such a nonprofit. And this didn't just come out of thin air, it was actually on the advice of the people who run the program at the state.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure that we understand this was done by their commission.
Yeah, I also want to say one thing, too. I support, I enjoy everything the Main Street's doing with the business downtown. When I sit here in this spot, I'm supposed to look after taxpayers' money. And I'm taking advice from my attorney. So, you know, that's why, but don't hold this grudge against me because I'm right with the Main Street program. I think you guys do a great job. But we got to make sure all our teeth and eyes are crossed and not all that. It is getting late.
Yes, and...
Honestly, I feel that's the best way we need to go.
Absolutely. I would hold no grudge and...
Yep. Yeah, we agree.
We completely agree.
Thank you, Greg. All right. Madam President.
I think it's been mentioned earlier, Forebowl Housing Advisory Committee, not the task force, is meeting on April 5th or 16th. Our new task force is meeting this Thursday. Two separate groups. County Hall is closed on Friday, Good Friday. I was planning on taking Thursday off, but as I sat here, I found more things to do on Thursday. So I'll be around for Thursday, but nobody will be around on Friday. Bicycle and pedestrian planning grant, you're aware of this, we did receive a grant to update our plan that was originally completed back in 2009. We have money to do that. We're one of nine municipalities, one county, to receive the money out of 23 that applied. The, you know, as I said before, it's an update that addresses facilities, programs, services, and regulations, and encourage safe walking and bicycling, as tightly mentioned with regard to some of the conversations that we've had at these meetings and during previous meetings. And also, too, as we go through the initial elements. System development fees analysis, you recall system development fees. It's kind of the new terminology, that formerly we called them impact fees. We met with Wootton last week and it's a kickoff meeting. We kind of have some marching orders for financial information that Wootton's going to go back and use in the analysis. The idea being that we come up with a new fee structure and then we go about that, applying that fee structure beginning this summer. July 1st is the goal for that. And as always with the impact fees, the ultimate goal is that we have a mechanism where development pays for the cost of development so that we're not burdening existing customers with the cost of development. So that's what it's all about. And we'll keep you updated on that. We'll hopefully have some information on that for you to look at very soon.
Quick question on that, Mr. Bruce Beck. Will we have a back and forth on the results from the company at all? Or is their product very final?
No, absolutely. I mean, that's the idea, is that you'll have to approve it. I mean, it's, it's nothing that you would have to approve like any other fee that you would approve, so.
There's a theory required to...
So, that's what you mean by back and forth?
Well, I don't begin to know what they have included in that analysis, but, I mean, some things are tickling the edge of my brain that I have questions about, so I don't need to go into the scope of that work, but I'm curious about the work that you're doing to develop those proposals.
You're looking at the, basically looking at the cost of, of operating and improving systems?
There's two, there's two methodologies, or you can do a combination, but there's one, one, and they're going to do all three to determine what's the best for the town.
Good.
But the statute provides two methodologies.
Okay, dear Mr., thank you.
But they're doing more than just that.
Yeah. Thank you.
The first con, the first electrical vehicle charging station is being installed over at Holmes Barber's Park. You can kind of see where the, the foundation is in. We're looking at, I think, having Duke Energy wire those up very soon. And then, two other items, I'll go off-script a little bit. We did receive an award notice from the Division of Water Infrastructure, DWI, for an asset inventory assessment grant for our water system or water distribution system. That's an amount of $150,000. It's going to require a match of $20,000 from the town, and that's similar to the work that's being done currently on the sewer question system. So this, I think probably what's, what would be beneficial for you is to kind of get an overview of all the different levels of plans that are going on right now, and maybe timelines for when they'll be completed, because I know I, you know, in order for me to keep these straight, I'm, I'm asking these guys all the time, over at Planning and Engineering, to kind of give me feedback for when this is due or when that's due. So I think I probably need a little bit better schematic for reporting out on when these timelines are, and when we're looking to have to spend money on, and when we expect products and that. So I think, I think it'd be good for you to expect that here in the near future, but that's definitely good news there. Some very needed planning that has to take place on our existing water distribution system, so.
All right, listen.
Yeah. Yeah, it's needed work. And then finally, met with, met with Chatham County on the Chatham County staff, the town managers, on the Chatham County comprehensive sewer and water master plan, and I put those, I put the RFQ in the scope, and a cover memo on that, too, that I put in front of you. It's probably lost and buried between much of other stuff that you got up there right now at this late hour, but I kind of just reset the table a little bit on how the funding of that is, is allocated. You recall that we were, Chatham County's essentially spearheading a $110,000 plan project, and the share is apportioned out between entities based on population. So we're getting a goodly part of, and taking part in, a $110,000 project for a very affordable contribution of $6,600. So I think that, that will, that plan and that study, when it's completed, will go a long way in giving us an idea for, you know, for what we currently have, what we need, and then how we'll fund it with regards to water treatment and distribution. So with that, I will tap out.
Okay. Mr. Sherry, thanks, John.
I just have a few things. I know the emails went by regarding the possible handrails on Main Street. I have personally been involved in two falls that everybody's made. Miss Bond was one, and the other gentleman was the fellow that fell and broke his arm coming up the steps right in front of New Horizons. His fall fell out, going out into the street. The handrails just in front of our restaurant are very cheap. I'm not going to say cheap, they, they were, they can be made locally, I'm sure, and installed by staff. I feel like we probably need some between Eric's and down to the Old Ford store, Old Ford Place down there, and on the other side from the barber shop up to S&amp;T's.
Can I follow up with you?
Yeah.
Can I, can I, I got, we'll, we'll come by and talk to you, but maybe...
Okay.
Need to point things out.
Another thing I got is just following up on the engineer, utilities engineer, just to understand that all our application is three to five years, is that correct experience? Were we not trying to hire a senior engineer?
That's what we have in the advertisement right now. We can get any, any level or any number of years of experience with the applications that you have.
We are. We know we're, we have some funding, right? I'm sorry? We have funding, since we have Fred and the other salary that we...
Yeah, I'm wanting to hire one engineer position with that.
Okay, okay. That's all we got.
I just wanted to kind of lay to even touch on this, but just wanted to get people thinking about it. You know, we have that team sponsored by Venge, and the question is whether to create a policy where if people are interested in making a memorial or honorary donation for something, we should be thinking about how to make this an option for people and to let them know that it's an option. It could be anything from a bench, it could be one of those little libraries, a clip of art, or it could be a piece of art, but I think that would be a nice thing to offer to people, might be able to get some things for our park downtown. So we could be thinking about what kind of policy we'd like to do for that. Just kind of mentioned their Pickle Jar Cafe opened at the old Oakley space last week, so I think they're doing very good.
Actually, yes, I have not.
I just want people to have that, so. Oh, I want to say, Brian, I am missing my Commissioner Naitag.
I was thinking about actually ordering some of that one.
Yeah. If there's anybody else, yeah, I'd love to have another one.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you guys don't mind, I'll just order a new one, because it's got the old logo, that old orange thing on it, anyway. So let's just get new ones.
Thank you.
If, if we, I found people sort of staring at, at me...
Twisting?
Trying to, to see where I was mayor of, and, and, thank you, Chuck, for laughing. It was serious when I was in Chicago, and now that I'm going to be in Chicago again, I mean, but still.
Yeah, with your Naitag on.
With my Naitag. Anyway, it's like we...
Like this, you want a big, old, round one?
Yeah.
Yeah. You.
What a picture all the time.
Yeah.
There's a real joke possibility going here.
I'm sorry.
Michael, will you save us from all this?
Well, Jay, couldn't agree more with the handrails and the Main Street Program had thought about that as well, and then actually had money in the budget to do that, so we were thinking the same page.
You know there are closet industries out there that are looking for town people to sue because they don't have standards on accessible facilities.
Fortunately, they have not been...
Yeah, I can't, I can't believe it.
Not going with...
Particularly of two people who've been injured like them.
So, Helen, yes, would you please know the date that DOT is planning to have to do the presentation about the 501(c)(3)? Do you have the date on that?
Yeah, I do have a date. As I sit here, I don't recall what the date is, but I'll find out.
All right, thank you. And you did the update about the county engineer, that's all that I need. John?
Yes, is there anything new regarding the NTDOT communication?
I, I'm afraid to go into a lot of detail, but the last conversation with Jeff, not here, the last conversation Jeff had with them sounded favorable as far as some of the things that we talked about, but I think we need to report out on that in a little bit more detail. But I think you guys would be pleased with what he had heard.
Great, that'd be great. Yeah, he, he mentioned some things on the telephone, I want to say a week ago, and he thought that he might put that in an email, and I guess he...
Yeah, we talked about how to, how to present that to you, and we just, we just never really decided on how we wanted to do that, so. Sounds like you talked a lot of these over.
Well, yeah, I called to follow up and apologize, because it seemed like something that might have gotten sideways, and he said, "By the way, there's some good news." So, yeah, but let's hear about that sooner than later, please. That's all. Please wait until the next meeting. It'd be great if we could get that to you for the next meeting. And, yes, and was the photograph here just for illustration purposes?
I'm sorry?
The photograph was just for purposes of illustration?
Out of pedestrian plans, so I thought the sidewalk might be, the newest sidewalk would be built.
Congratulations again on that, and congratulations, big congratulations on the $120,000 grant for the water system inventory. That's really, that's great.
Thank you.
And I'm very much looking forward to reading this now to highlight that we should have some information regarding the makeup and shape of that.
Yeah, the scope, the scope should give you quite a bit.
It goes in there.
Yeah, the scope is in there.
Awesome.
The approach is better described in the response to the RFQ. The meeting that we had with them was really, I mean, it really kind of narrowed it out with some of the stuff that they were presenting to us as, as, as tools, really, that we can use in, in, you know, managing this information once we have it, so that it's not just, you know, it's not just a binder that we kind of update every five years, it's actually a, you know, a dashboard software that we can use to plug into scenarios and use our collective CIPs to determine how we're going to attack certain problems that, I mean, because it's, the whole point of this is, is we need to collaboratively look at some of the infrastructure challenges that we have, and not just kind of go at it alone, like with that. So I'm really excited about it.
That's great. That's great. So it sounds like it's going to be a dynamic tool, and it's useful for your daily work.
That's the hope, yeah.
Wonderful. Brian, that's really good here. Um, all right. Dwight? So I'd like to circle back to Commissioner Farrell's question, because I remain concerned about the, the fact that concrete and steel are going in the ground, and plumbing and pipes, and I imagine and believe that someone with three to five years' experience is not going to be adequate for the challenge of ensuring that the infrastructure that goes in will become assets that we would actually want to.
Do we know that? I think we do have, we do have to help with that, though. We do have two inspectors that do that very thing, and so that's, that's kind of really their job, is to determine whether or not the work that's being done is work that can conform to town standards and last for, you know, the necessary amount of time and serve, you know, our public needs. So that's not really so much the work of an engineer as it is the work of our inspection engineering, which we currently have on board, so.
And I imagine that that work needs to start well in advance of the actual...
That's currently ongoing. Yeah, it's currently ongoing.
With design review and, and even prior to that.
And they, they take part in that, as well as currently hydrostructures is involved in plan review for us right now as well. We've been very fortunate to have that available.
At, at church, we say, "If hearts and minds are clear, is there devotion to the church?"
Some of it.
Thank you. Moved by Mark Spear, for second and third. I will follow him.